Good afternoon, which is different than I usually say. This is a not regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It's November 6th about 4:00 PM. And our exclusive purpose for being here today is to interview the final three candidates to succeed Dr. DeAndrea as Superintendent of Schools for Wareham. I would like to begin by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting will be broadcast tomorrow. It is being televised, but for reasons related to professional courtesy to the candidates, it will not be live for people at home. It is also being recorded, an audio recording, by Jamie Wixton, as usual. And we will begin by me wanting to thank specifically the Search Committee, which was made up of thirteen members of the community, including Kevin Bajoli as Chair and Joyce Bakayaki as his able assistant, also a member of the school committee. It was a tremendous effort on their part. I think it was a tremendously successful effort, based on the quality of the candidates that the rest of the school committee has been asked to consider. But anybody else besides the two members of the school committee, including a student at the high school, Emily Robertes, deserves your respect and gratitude, because it was hours and hours of significant thoughtful, at times arduous work, just to get us to this point.
Sorry, Jeff, can I just interrupt? It was Emily Brundage.
Brundage. Who's?
Yes.
Thank you for the correction.
I just want to make sure we have the right Emily. Yeah, Emily Brundage.
Yes. She even came to the meet and greet this afternoon, so she deserves lots of plaudits. Before we get going, I want to give Kevin the opportunity to talk about the process of how we got to where we are this evening, because that was a significant process that the Search Committee went through, and Kevin was Chair of that committee.
Thank you. So, we made the decision early on as a school committee to start this search process early in the school year. We talked about it last spring. We worked about, we talked about it again this summer in August. And we made the conscious effort to begin this search, and now it's only November 6th, and we're finishing our search tonight. Many districts are just starting or haven't started yet. And the reason for that was to get the first crack at the best candidates, to get someone that we could hire here at Wareham before they get scooped up by another district. So while it has been a very, maybe condensed process, it's been a very thorough process. We enlisted Mask and Sean Costello is our consultant to assist us with this search, and that's been great. As Jeff said, we had a committee of thirteen people that represented town officials, parents, students, administrators, teachers, central office, school committee. It was a lot of hours that we met, and we took our work very seriously. We surveyed the community to get their input, and we had site visits we just completed to all three candidate school districts. And all three candidates came to our district and toured all the buildings, met with all the administrators, had a meet and greet with members of the community that opted to show up. And so it was a very thorough process. And we did find three very highly qualified candidates. All have different strengths, and we had to, tonight, have the very difficult decision of figuring out which person is the best match for Wareham. I'm confident we will do that. But I'm confident that we could pick any of the three, and we would have made a strong decision. So that gives me some solace. So tonight, we've narrowed it down to these three finalists, and we look forward to the interviews. And we'll thank you for showing up as well and being part of this and to watch this very public process.
Just, just to be clear, the format for the rest of the evening, which if you can manage to hold out throughout that, kudos to you, will be a short opening statement by each candidate. Make sure they understand that's voluntary. It's entirely up to them if they'd like to do that when you go get them. There will, there is approximately an hour and a quarter allotted to each interview. Then there's a fifteen minute break between the interviews. And then when we've done all three candidates, then we will recess for approximately ten minutes, not to deliberate, because all the deliberations will in fact occur publicly in front of all of you, and ultimately in front of anybody who chooses to watch the tape of the, of the evening. And when we come back, we will then deliberate in front of all of you and make a decision as to who to offer the position to. That begins the negotiation process. There's no guarantee whatsoever that we will necessarily come to an agreement, but I think I can safely say, based on the feedback we've gotten during, over the last week or so, that we have three very enthusiastic candidates who are looking forward to being a part of Wareham Public Schools. Having said that, why don't you go get Mr. Williams?
Got it.
Thank you.
Jeff, well, Sean's out of the --
I was just about to say, is everybody good?
I'm good. I just want to take a minute to thank Jamie Wixton for all the hard work she has done these last couple of weeks, creating schedules, sending emails, doing everything behind the scenes to make sure that this process went smoothly.
Yes.
I'm sure there are many things we don't even know that you did, Jamie, and you did them. You took care of everything, so thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank the receiving districts that allowed us to come and visit and just, and talk to the candidates' coworkers and subordinates, so that was also really helpful.
Mm-hmm.
By the way, committee, feel free, after you've asked your question, to have a follow-up, okay? I don't think, I don't want anybody to feel that if something did not come clear as a result of the initial response, that you can't follow it up. Look to me, but just so I know what's going on, but I think that's, that's totally appropriate. On the other hand, we don't want to have too many follow-ups, otherwise we'll get behind. It's going to be a long evening, as it is. Welcome again.
Hello.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is Warley Williams. He's currently the, he is currently the principal at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech, and we are very pleased to have him here as one of our finalists. As, as Sean may have told you, you're welcome to make a short opening statement, and at that point, when you're finished, we have a series of three questions each. I will have the privilege of going first, but there's no significance to that. And there may be follow-ups to your answer. That's, that's entirely up to the committee member. And once we've gone through those, those three questions each, you can make a closing remark if you want to. Once again, it's at your discretion, and then we'll ask you to excuse yourself and do whatever makes you comfortable for a while.
Okay.
And in your case, if, you can even leave. That's entirely up to you. Short opening remarks, if you'd like.
Okay. Well, thank you for this opportunity. It is an immense pleasure to be here, to speak to you about your amazing community, Wareham community. I'm interested in the superintendent position. I have sixteen years of experience in education, and I'm in education because I absolutely love shaping the lives of young learners. And I've done that in New Bedford, as I said, for the last sixteen years. And I would love to, with all the experience that I've had, especially in the last five years, as a principal at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech, to help lead Wareham to the next level of learning. And in my role currently as principal, I do run the building, twenty-two hundred students, nearly three hundred staff. Additionally, though, I do run the central, I'm, I take part in running the central administrative, you know, roles throughout the district. And so one might say, well, Mr. Williams may not have the experience to be a central administrator or a superintendent, but I can tell you throughout this interview, I hope to display that I am ready for that task, and most certainly to display the relationship building and the work that I can do around instructional capacity building, as well as, hopefully, handling the financial deficits that overcome the district from year to year, you know, with some really out-of-the-box thinking. And so I look forward to having those conversations throughout this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, your first question. Public education is under attack from a variety of sources, whether it's advocates for issuing vouchers, parents of minority children who believe segregated schools deny equal resources and impact achievement, culturally conservative citizens who believe teaching and curriculum is slanted to the left, or taxpayers who advocate against rising property taxes. There is no longer a nationwide consensus or trust in the integrity of public education. What would you do to change the perception of Wareham and reduce the number of parents who send their children outside of our public school system?
Thank you for the question. That is, that is a comprehensive question, and that is the truth. I think education is under attack, and I think it's so important for the public, certainly a town like Wareham, to know exactly what benefits can be had through this public education that's offered. So I think having open communication with the community, having open doors, as you do in school committee meetings, but certainly in the schools, as a superintendent, getting out into the community at the different groups that are out there, senior citizens and Rotary Clubs, et cetera, so that way they understand what is offered here at Wareham High School. And I think they have to understand that, you know, with, like you said, there's culturally conservative folks, there's, there's all these groups that have concerns about public education at the moment, but they have to understand that this district is a diverse district with needs around equity, students on IEPs, students who need supports, and the importance of ensuring that Wareham is a great community, that is only done through a strong foundation in education. And so I think this town needs a strong leader to promote that, and that would be in me. Getting out there, not just in the district, but out in the community, to let folks know where their dollars are going and the benefit of where those dollars are going. And that's in education, through the programming, from K all the way up through the high school. And the way I see it is that kids in the middle school need to be excited about going to Wareham High School. And clearly, that may not be the case, because there are so many other options. There's Sturgis, there's Upper Cape Cod Tech. And I believe going after innovative pathways, going after Chapter 74 opportunities. I know there's one pathway for Chapter 74 at the high school now, but I think expanding those beyond what's, what's out there, so that we, we create opportunities for kids, but also give them a reason to want to stay in Wareham. I think there is a perception issue. There might even be a perception issue around safety in the school. Whether that's real or perceived, I think it has to be addressed. So number one, it's being transparent with the community about what really exists, not being afraid to talk about what really exists, and having groups of people come together and come up with solutions to try to improve what might need to be improved and highlight that. Bring people in so they can see that. And I can tell you with me, all of, all of what is great about Wareham, this town will know. The constituents, the taxpayers, the parents, they will know about it. All of what, all of the gaps that we can fill in with greatness for kids to want to go to the high school, for parents who want their children to go to the high school, I will be promoting that and building that out, for sure. Thank you for that question.
Do you think the curriculum and the instruction is slanted politically to the left?
I would say that, so there's lots of curriculum, and I think I'd have to look at what curriculum we're talking about. As a general statement, I'm not sure I can speak to that. I'd have to, I'd have to look at what curriculum you're talking about, for sure. And I'm not trying to dodge the question, but there's so much curriculum out there.
How about the instruction?
Certainly, so instructors instruct. So you have a multitude of people who teach in a class, in a school. Each person comes with their own political agenda. Some people are apolitical and come with no agenda. But certainly, if you have a curriculum that the state expects you to teach, but then you have an educator who takes that curriculum and designs a lesson, they will teach it the way they teach. That's the autonomy they have. And I think humans naturally, at times, bring out their own politics into what they teach. And I've been around long enough to have seen that, and so I do my very best to verbally expound to teachers to be as neutral as possible in their teaching, so that we, students can arrive at their own decisions on fact-based matters in curriculum and instruction. And I, that's proven by policy that I've written, that I've spoken, and, and I've disseminated and sought to try to instill in schools, because I believe kids should be able to arrive at their own political opinions on their own.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Roger?
Hello, Warley. What is your experience with the collective bargaining process, and how have you put into practice the balancing of retaining talented, experienced educators while also attracting and improving the livelihood of younger teachers? And how would you strive to accomplish this balance in Wareham without needing town meeting to make up for potential shortfalls?
So my experience with collective bargaining stems predominantly from when I first started as a principal at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech five years ago. When I came in, the contracts were under negotiation the moment I got there. Greater New Bedford Voc Tech had never had a union before, and they had just recently unionized. And so soon as I came in, I was a part of all of the units in those meetings and the establishment of the ground rules and all of what the agreements came out to be across months of, you know, dialogue back and forth. And I, I would say that, so my experience is firsthand, and I've gone through two, two agreements, two agreement sessions with our groups, three-year contracts. And I think what got us to the point of completing those contracts, and I will be honest with you, as we all know, they can be very tense and contentious, and it was difficult for me as a principal, because I'm working sort of at a central level to build out this policy for teachers, but also trying to run the school and keep a strong culture and climate among teachers and students. So I can tell you that that experience was and continues to be difficult, playing both roles, but the most important thing in all of it is continued communication, right? Making sure that people feel heard throughout the whole process. Understanding that we may not agree, but we have to find the best possible way to come to consensus through conversation. And I would say that that has, that has been what I think has caused us to come to agreements pretty quickly in, in both of the sessions that we have had. And for me, continuing my work with the union, just today, I had a meeting with, with a couple of our union representatives, and they had some concerns, and we were able to agree, disagree, and then come to a conclusion and, and support teachers. And so that's my experience with collective bargaining. And I can, so I can tell you, it's been contentious, and we've, we've found winning strategies through continued communication. And when it comes to retaining talent, I think the most important thing for retaining talent is having strong mentor programs for onboarding new teachers. And when you say new young teachers, as you had exclaimed it, you have teachers who come in with a wealth of knowledge from their degree program, but they may not have ever been in a classroom with kids who may be misbehaving or have significant disabilities. And so there are a wealth of knowledge in the building from experienced teachers. And so having teachers as mentors, a strong mentor program is key. That's a way to retain, because when you don't have a strong mentor program, and I've been in schools that haven't, that's where teachers decide, wow, this is too much for me, I have to leave. Because that mentor becomes a support system technically for actually operating in the classroom, but also a support system when it gets really difficult and you need someone to lean on with the mental difficulties in teaching a classroom. And when it comes to attracting young teachers, I think it's really about publicizing your school, getting out there, when you're in the community, saying great things about your school, making sure the social media is vibrant, it's bright, it's showing your, the students at work, showing the partnerships, students working with, with outside organizations and the district's partnership with outside organizations. It's just about being in the face of people out in the community, as well as those who who are interested in working in our community. You know, when people go to a website, a district's website, that website says a lot about the district, as to whether they want to apply or not, right? Who's on the front page? What messages are on the front page and all of those things? So for me, attracting talent comes from the way we address the community, to technology, and then how we onboard folks, and then sustain that talent throughout with professional development. Thank you.
All set? Joyce?
Could you describe the most significant public relations crisis you've managed that involved high levels of media scrutiny and community outrage? Detail your three-part communication plan for staff, parents, and the media, and what you did to actively rebuild trust within the community afterward. Please.
Can you just mention the three part again? I'm sorry.
Sure. Public relations crisis that you've managed that involved high levels of media scrutiny and community outrage? Detail your three-part communication plan for staff, parents, and the media.
Yes. I have to say, I've been through quite a few, and so one that comes to mind would be, we had a, I don't want to say it was a bomb threat, but someone had written a threatening statement about a bomb being in the building on a bathroom stall, okay? And it was done during the day, and so students had seen it. And so it was important for us to, to address it. I actually just dealt with one this week. But that one is a lower, lower skill. So I'll talk about the one from a couple of years ago. It was in a bathroom. People had seen it. People were concerned. It didn't feel like, it felt like it was a joke, but with those things like that, you just, you can't play with those, right? And so I immediately called my superintendent, let him know what the concern was, and it was already, at that point, dismissal had already happened, once we were assessing the situation, but we called emergency management. We called the State Police Bomb Squad to help us assess whether, like, what's the next steps. And so what the next steps were, were, was for the, the State Police Bomb Squad to come in, and they came in with sniffing dogs, and they sniffed out the entire school. So we determined that there wasn't an imminent threat in the building. But nonetheless, what we did was, is we drafted, we got with our PR team, and, and the superintendent, myself, and our central admin team started to build out a message to our whole school community, just to let them know that this is the case. We had a threat. Someone wrote on a bathroom behind culinary, and that we have determined that it is not an imminent, imminent threat. We did search cameras to see if we can identify who was going in and out of the bathroom. We were unable to ascertain who that was. So what we did was we sent out that message to the school community. So first, we had worked with, with the authorities. We sent out messaging to the school community. Media, and that includes sending it out to the media. And what I wanted to make sure of, and this is my principal hat, was to ensure that families were comfortable sending their kids to the school the next day after having heard that message. And so within, in that notice that we sent out to families, we let them know that we will, that we will have wands. We will be wanding kids as they come in, right? Wandering backpacks, wanding their person, non-invasive kind of wands, to make sure that if anyone has anything metal, we'll search, just to try to create a level of precaution. And we also reached out to New Bedford Public Schools to bring in additional school resource officers, okay? Just to kind of heighten that, because of the heightened concern that folks had. And so that was the way that I approached it with the central admin team. And so I, you know, creating the PR, notice to the community, working with the EMS, that was kind of my central hat on, and then preparing the security team, assistant principals, and everyone else that helps onboard our kids in for entry and for dismissal. That was kind of my, my principal's hat on. And then incurring all the calls from parents about what, what now, what's next. So I took those calls with the assistant principal for any concerns that they had. And we allayed those concerns by letting them know we had additional police presence, as well as wands, to ensure that if there was anyone with metal, we were searching them. And that was for three days thereafter.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
April?
So, sorry. What are your thoughts on the evaluative process of the superintendent, and how should your annual evaluation be integrated into the strategies and action plans you put into place to move the district forward? And please be as specific as possible. How would you respond if your evaluation wasn't strong and reflected a need for significant change, and would legal action ever be a recourse you would take against the school committee? How in your estimation does this play into the process of strategic planning for the district on a multi-year basis?
Yes. So, thank you for that question. My evaluation, so I'm a strong proponent of the education evaluation system at all levels at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech and any institution I work for. I think it really sets the tone for the work ahead for the district, for the superintendent, myself, you know, running the school. And so all of the district improvement plan goals, the school improvement goals, in my eyes, have to be attached to my evaluation, okay? Because that guides and steers the work. My evaluation as a superintendent, that guides and steers the work, so that way the folks can work through me, the principals, the assistant principals, the teachers, right? So if there's a district improvement goal, I'm setting that tone through my evaluation and the district improvement plan, and that's what school improvement plan should look like, and that's what evaluations should look like for principals, et cetera. There's room for autonomy, but I think the goals of the district have to be met out through the folks. And so I think that it all has to be tied together. And I can tell you that certainly there would be no legal action if I didn't get an evaluation that was proficient or exemplary but were needs improvement, which has never been the case for me. But what I would want, and I would hope for, is a very significant discussion about the areas of improvement that I would need improvement in. I think that, I know that the educational evaluation system literally is equal, the term is equal to conversation. It literally is conversation between evaluator and evaluatee to improve their practice. So if I were given anything less than a proficient, I would, I would really hope that I would get professional development and support around how I can, I can grow as a leader, okay? And I only say that because that is the approach I take as a principal, and I ask for all of the folks who work with me. Through the evaluation system, we support, we, we coach and we grow the teachers, the administrators and the teachers that, that seek success for our students. And I think that that, I would model that right from the top. But district goals get tied to your evaluation. That's how I'm held accountable. And if along the way it feels, and there's a, there's a midterm review, I would hope that there's a comprehensive understanding on my part on what I might be missing, so I can help steer that ship the right way. But that conversation should never be a legal one. It should be a discussion between us to improve through the evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Kevin?
So if you didn't have to worry about the budget, the school committee, the teachers' union, or public opinion, what one initiative would you champion here at Wareham to improve student achievement? And what research or data would you have used to come to that decision? Is the main part of the question. And then just to follow up, how would you implement a layered strategy to hope, hopefully get a smooth outcome, and how would you measure its success? So the first part is, you could almost do anything you want, one initiative to improve achievement, what would it be?
If there were one initiative to improve achievement, it would, it would certainly be, there's so many things that I could think of. I have to choose one, and that's difficult. But, you know, it's tied to what I kept hearing when I was, when I was on my visit on Tuesday. How is it that we can, how is it that we can get middle schoolers to want to be Wareham High Schoolers, right? Because they have so many other options. And so for me, it would be really trying to explore ways that we can expand Chapter 74 or innovation pathways, programming into the high school, right? Adult education programming into the after-school programming of the high school, because I think it is clear that if, if the number of kids that are going up to Upper Cape Cod Tech are going because they want a vocational trade, then I think that's something that, that we should have available to students here in, in this district. And, and that's barring all the concerns of, well, where would we put it? What space do we have? Again, if it's, if it is this hope for nothing in the way, it would be Chapter 74, because I know the potential that kids have when they have a trade. Doors are open for a career of their choice, but also when they have a comprehensive education, they also have the doors open for the they also have the doors open for the college of their choice. So they have so many more opportunities with Chapter 74. And I think that does lead to the initial point, student success and achievement. And we see that, ninety, in the school I work in, kids are only in academics for ninety days, yet they score very well on the, on the, on the MCAS testing. And that's because of the amount of work around mathematics, science, and literacy in the vocation because of the Level Two and Three languages used in those technical vocational programs. And another thing, there was a second part to your question. I would also, I would also consider the facilities. I think that I would look at potentially a turf field and improving some of the facilities for sports and into scholastic. Only because the statistics that I've reviewed across the country, students often make decisions about high schools based on opportunities. That, one, there's three of them. Number two, the beauty of the facilities, but also number three, the sports, right? And that's not me saying that, that's what the statistics say. And so I think when you have a beautiful, when you have a beautiful facilities when it comes to sports, I think that's an attractor for kids. So I think a beautiful, you know, field stadium for field hockey and football and all those other sports that had that beautiful Viking in the center of it, might be really attractive for some students who might be looking at other pathways after middle school. Did I miss anything in that question? I apologize if I did.
Well, I guess, I mean, you kind of went towards the keeping kids in Wareham piece, I think, which was obviously very important. I was looking more at, I think, academic achievement. But I think you hinted around it, I guess. You said that one was connected to the other.
Yeah, so what I would do, honestly, I don't think, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that part if you don't mind. I'll try to answer quickly, because you know I get going. I would say that what would be important to really try to grow academic proficiency with students, and I see a lot of it already, so I just, when I was on my walkthrough on Tuesday. But I really believe that for students who struggle, integrating multi-tiered systems of supports, integrating the D cap, which every district has, a comprehensive accommodation plan, as well as universal design for learning teaching strategies, for teaching, reaching and teaching all kids at the Level One, I think is so imperative to engrain in a school system. And there's nothing that I would never want to try to roll out anything quickly in year one. I think certainly seeing what's working and building out consensus on where we can go with certain new tools, I think would be key in my first year. But moving forward, if people were, were open to new ideas, that's, those are the three tools I would want to roll out and try to see in every classroom. And also the growth of co-teaching models. And if co-teaching, the co-teaching model in this district were something that we needed to work on for quality, I would say that it would be worthwhile for us to invest in some training around that for strong planning. Thank you.
Thank you. My turn again.
All right.
MCAS scores in Massachusetts, including in Wareham, have seen a decline for many years. The latest NAEP, National Assessment for Educational Progress for Literacy Comprehension, has never been lower in this country. And yet no one seems to know what to do about it. And no one in educational communities has stepped forward to accept responsibility. Who or what do you think is responsible for the decline? And what were you to do to bring some degree of accountability to Wareham Public Schools?
Thank you for that question. That's unfortunate, the data is, is going down and I think, or decreasing. And you see that especially after the pandemic. You see attendance rates drop and all of that. I really think early education is key. I think building a strong foundation with early literacy, having kids really proficient in basic phonics, in phonics, and knowing how to read and write so that way they can be skilled from fourth grade on is so important. So having programming that from K to three that is strong, I think is key. I also think that promoting reading as early as possible, you know, reading to, to, you know, your pregnant wife, to the child in the womb, starting from there to reading bedtime stories all the way through. Getting kids acculturated to the joy and love of reading. I think numeracy, you know, people, most Americans say, "I hate math," right? I think that culture needs to shift, you know, making math fun. Having programming that, that is the sort that kids want to be involved in, right? Engaging instruction.
I think you're misinterpreting my question.
Okay.
This decline has occurred over the last two decades anyway, even with a similar amount of early education. In fact, we may have more early education now than we did twenty years ago. So it's not how to reverse the decline. It's what's, what's caused it? And where is the accountability so that we can have people taking responsibility for reversing it?
Yeah, that's a deep question. That's a difficult one, and I still agree that it's, it's early literacy. I think that the data that we're talking about, and I'm not trying to challenge you, I want to go further with it, that we do realize that that data, those data points show that kids are not getting that. And so what I would shift over to is culture. I think that as a society, I don't think education sometimes is the paramount culturally.
You say early literacy, are you talking about parents?
I am talking about parents, I'm talking about community.
So you're saying parents are less committed to helping their child get prepared for preschool, kindergarten? They're less prepared and they're doing less preparation today than they were twenty years ago?
No, I didn't say that. What I did say, so because what I am saying is that parents work a lot. There are parents who have two jobs, three jobs, there are parents, so that's not to say they're not committed. I don't want to say they're not committed. What I'm saying is some parents just don't have the time to, to, to invest in their child to build in that literacy. And I think that it's important to somehow try to find that time, whether it's programming outside of the household, before school, after school, or what have you. But certainly trying to promote in households to carve out that time for early literacy. That is where I'm going, but it was twofold because I'm talking about the household and a strong emphasis of it in the classroom. So it's twofold for me, and I'm sorry that I didn't clarify that, but it's certainly twofold.
So you're saying parents are too busy keeping a roof over their heads and food on the table, and they're busier now than they were twenty years ago? And the kids' early literacy efforts has, that's been the sacrifice? And you're saying it hasn't been made up for sufficiently by programs within the school? Is that what you're saying?
I think that there is a culture. I think that in our country right now, that there is a sort of a culture in which education doesn't always take the front seat in certain households and even, so there's that. And I think that us schools, us teachers in schools become, we are, we are that routine around the importance of education, for sure. And so I think that I would like to be the superintendent that spearheads the effort to try to champion parents to find that time for literacy in their households and numeracy in their households. I don't want to make judgments about households, I'm not saying all that. I do recognize that people have been busy today as they were twenty years ago. And I'm trying to get to the point about culture. I believe that culturally, folks, I don't think people have education as a centerpiece as they, as they once did, especially since COVID. That's what I see. And I think that it's important that from the top, from principals, from superintendents, principals to teachers, to keep pushing that in the community. Because I just believe we are in a anti-intellectual moment in our country, in our time. And that's the kind of, that's the point I'm getting at. So I would also say that phones have a lot to do with it. So I am a strong proponent of there being no phones in sight in a school because I think they're extremely distracting. So any distraction in the classroom can really interrupt the possibility of growth for a student in a classroom. So threefold, early, early literacy is important, getting kids to love education, getting them to really feel like it's important to them and it'll open up doors for them in their future. Starting really young, so that they're acculturated to it and believe in it. And then maintaining it in middle school, which is where we lose kids, not, not Wareham losing them and we don't get them in high school. But I mean, we see kids drop out predominantly eighth, ninth, tenth grade. They've made up their mind. So it's about really having strong, engaging programming for kids at that timeframe. So I would say early education, building out a culture that puts education at the center of the community and electronics, really being thoughtful about how much electronics kids are facing during the school day and even after the school day.
So you believe the culture has changed over the last twenty years to be less oriented towards education?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Roger?
Yes. So, safety in schools continues to be a critical issue for students, staff, and their families. How would you assess the current safety initiatives and protocols in Wareham Public Schools? How often would you reevaluate safety procedures? And who would you involve in those conversations? And what would be your course of action if, God forbid, there were a safety emergency?
This is a topic that means a lot to me because I was, I was an assistant principal for five years. And so spent a lot of time managing a security team, conducting trainings around Alice lockdown, so the Alice lockdown, active shooter system. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but the Alice lockdown shooter system is one that I've, I've been accustomed to for at least twelve or thirteen years. And I know that Wareham Public Schools utilizes it because the Wareham principal talked to me about how he trains his entire staff. So I think that makes me feel really good about that. I'm not sure if the middle and the elementary school train for that, but I think training for Alice active shooter lockdown is vital to give kids and teachers and the people in the building the resources they need and the planning that they need to increase their survivability if there is a shooter, a knife whale, or someone who means harm in the building. So that training is imperative and I'm glad that it's happening here. I also saw that there was a mechanism that sort of locks classroom doors from the inside, sort of with a, with a red key that goes in from the door to the floor plate. That is, that is key because that is part of the lockdown component, the L component of Alice. So for me, I love what I see, I have seen so far in the district that shows that there is a commitment. There's also an investment made by having those doors installed with that and because of the increased survivability. And so I've conducted those trains, I'm training the trainer for Alice. I ensure that our assistant principals train it and drill it. Once a year, the drill for our school will actually be next week. It's literally an unannounced drill, you have to know it almost like you know a fire drill. And I think the people who need to be involved are the school resource officer, the school's principal. If you have assistant principals or deans, they have to be involved. And they need to be at the helm of, of planning the trainings and the drills so that we, everyone is aware and they understand the importance of being trained and prepared to enact this, to save as many people as possible if something happens. That is, that is key. Course of action, now the course of action, that's a huge question. The course of action, if, if an emergency like that did happen, where, you know, Alice lockdown had to be utilized and there was a, there was a, someone looking to inflict harm. And I think, I believe that, I would hope that the schools were so well-trained that they were able to either evacuate first to increase survivability, lockdown, or swarm and, you know, subdue the person as the training says. And if that did happen, I think what's important is the next steps of it, right? Hopefully there's an SRO, or by then there are, the whole police department is here to help deal with the situation. And so in that case, you'd have the police department dealing, dealing with that issue to neutralize it. You would probably have media on site, but I'll get to that in a second. You would have assistant principals and principals looking to cordon off, neutralize the site, get kids to an emergency location, ensure that everything is, all communications between the officers on site are clean and everything is safe. And I would be working as a superintendent with the media so that way the community is aware of what's going on and what our next steps are. And I would certainly work, be working on with the PR team what the next steps are for safely getting students back to parents, because that's not an easy part of the process. But parents want their kids ASAP. However, the police want to make sure that none of those kids are involved with the scenario. And so I would just say in a short elevator pitch, that is how I would, I'd kind of schematically deal with that situation and hope that would never happen, but that's how I would certainly go about that.
Appreciate it.
And last point is I think vestibules, welcome center vestibules are very important. I see that you have welcome centers here, but taking them to the next level with vestibules in which you have a two-part entry, so that way people aren't just getting right into the school, but they have to get in through one door, get vetted in between the two doors before they get into the second door into the school. That is something that I've actually done at Great New Bedford Voc Tech and at Keith Middle School when I was there, both as, first as AP and then as principal, respectively. So thank you for the question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well said, Roger.
Yeah.
Joyce?
The level of special education students in Wareham is well above the state average. Could you please tell us about your experience working with this population? And also tell us about two initiatives that you've put into place in special education. Were you successful and how did you measure that success?
Yes. My experience working with special education students stems from the moment I got into education at Whaling City Alternative School. I'm gonna say ninety-five percent of the kids there were on IEPs. At Keith Middle School, eighty-seven percent of the students are high needs. I think it was something like seventy-plus percent were on IEPs. And so Great New Bedford Voc Tech, that's a different story. We have about ten to twelve percent on IEPs. But, so my experience is working with kids who, who need support, so at all levels, right? And at Keith Middle School, we had a TR four room with students who needed to be toiled it, you know, and those levels of supports. And the things that I can say that I've put in place, two things that I can say I put in place that I thought were really worthwhile were focusing on training for co-teacher pairs, okay? Keith Middle School, we trained, and it was teacher-based training. We brought in a consultant to support that training in our PLC teams. So we had sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, so each grade had their PLCs across grades. And let's take, for example, the ELA teacher would work with the special ed teacher, their pairing, and build out the best strategies for planning and implementing lessons. And I, and the goal was to ensure that you couldn't even identify who was the teacher or the special ed teacher in the classroom so that way the supports are just strong all the way through and all kids are supported. So I saw success through that, and how that was measured is through our common formative assessments. I know you have the NUEA that you utilize here in the school. We created common formative assessments at Keith Middle School that the teachers created that were tied directly to the standards. And that was because it wasn't just a beginning, middle, and end of year. It was, it was more, they were predominantly beginning, middle, and end of year, but there were check-ins in between to monitor the progress or lack thereof for students so that we, they can zero in on the particular standards that kids needed more support in. And another initiative that I think is, is key that was rolled out at Keith Middle School and also at Great New Bedford Voc Tech is the development of the district comprehensive accommodation plan, the D cap plan, right? Ensuring that teachers are at the Level One level, teaching all students with teaching strategies that already have accommodations and modifications built in based on, based on the needs of each learner in front of them, right? So, and that goes right with the universal design for learning standards. Each kid in front of me, I'm meeting them where they are. And so that, again, that might seem easy, all right, here's a D cap, give it to them, they do it. It's not, because we're moving teacher's cheese, it's a new practice. So there was a lot of training that went into that, and a lot of culture building for folks to be comfortable with implementing that. And at Voke, we're still doing that, at New Bedford Voke, we're still working that rollout. But at Keith, we had that rollout and I think it was very successful to support teachers so that way they normalized teaching supports that, that were gen ed, that were not just gen ed, but also accommodative and supportive for all kids.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Yep.
April?
Our district, oh, sorry. I keep shouting it out. Our district has a unique makeup of students, including a high level of diverse students, students with behavioral needs, students from social, economically disadvantaged families. What specific initiatives would you put in place to ensure that each student in Wareham Public Schools feels a sense of belonging? And how do you believe that sense of belonging impacts the quality of teaching and learning?
So... Yes, so belonging is, I think belonging is very important because every... For a kid to really feel like they want to be in a classroom, they have to believe that they belong there. And I think that starts with the teacher. Making that kid feel like they're the center of the universe, I always say this. And that's always something I try to do, and I try to model to our teachers, right? Make that kid feel like you actually care about them, make them feel like they belong in that classroom. Same thing I do as principal, make that kid feel like they belong in this school. And so that is, that is the philosophy. And I think it's impacted... And so, that is the philosophy, and I think it's impactive because you see attendance rates improve when kids want to be in school, so, right? There's metrics that you can actually follow to see when kids want to be in a place, in a school, in that environment. And the initiatives, the first one that I could think of that I would put in place, you know, I heard a lot about how there is a high number of students in foster homes in this district. There are a number of students coming from households and neighborhoods where, you know, there might be some transancy and what have you. So, it's clear to me that there are kids that probably have some trauma and some background things that might hinder them from being focused on learning. So, I would want to bring in an initiative like trauma-informed practices, teaching practices. And I've unrolled those at Keith Middle School and at New Bedford Voc Tech, especially after the pandemic, because when us grownups all came back to work, we were stressed out like everybody else, and I think there was an edge that teachers had, and I wanted teachers to be reminded that the kids in front of us, they struggle and they need our support and they need us strong, and sometimes we need to just be thoughtful about what they're going through in order to kind of take down that barrier and reach and teach them for who they are, right? And so, that's what trauma-informed does, you know? It allows a teacher, it teaches the teacher to be thoughtful about this kid. I mean, I can give an example. I have a youngster whose brother was shot in the city, and, you know, he struggled, you know? He struggled in the last couple of days, and he's been, he's had an edge. And so, we made sure that we reached out to teachers to let them know, we didn't tell them exactly what happened, but hey, something very calamitous happened in his family, he's going to have an edge. Let's be thoughtful about how we address him. Let's be thoughtful about the workload that we give him. I'm not trying to lower standards for kids, but I just want teachers to kind of lower the affect, to be thoughtful about kind of where the kid is and where they're coming from. So, that's the initiative I put, that's one that I could think of that I'd put in, try to put in place, for sure.
Thank you.
Well said, April. Kevin?
So, I'm going to end the second round of questioning with what might seem like a simple question, but I think it can also be revealing. Who has been a strong mentor in your life, and what are the lessons you've learned from this individual?
Dead or alive, doesn't matter.
Nope.
We don't know them.
You don't know them? Well, Martin Luther King is certainly my biggest idol, but Coach Lanigan.
Sorry, who?
Martin Luther King Jr.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, Martin Luther King Jr., for sure, yeah. When I have very difficult.
That would be a hero.
That would be a hero? Okay.
Yeah, I think, that's how I would define it.
He wasn't my mentor, right? He wasn't. I got to read his books, but that doesn't mean I got to learn. I would say that my mentor is certainly Jim Lanigan. I think this is the person I could think of at the moment. Jim Lanigan was a person when I, in high school, who was there for me no matter what. You want to talk about trauma-informed? He knew what I went through. My mother died when I was 16, junior in high school, and that man made sure that all my teachers had my back at a time where I was, you know, I was a disgruntled little youngster. And he'd never judged me. He always was there for me. He always supported me, and I consider him a mentor who helped me see the best in people who sometimes aren't at their best in moments. So, that would be Mr. Lanigan. Are you familiar with Mr. Lanigan?
I'm very familiar with Mr. Lanigan. He's a family friend and a very good choice as a mentor.
He's a difference maker, absolutely. Thank you for that question.
A second?
Please describe the two changes you have made in your current or prior districts that have had a demonstrable positive impact on the quality of the educational environment. How has it improved teaching and learning, and what metrics can be attributed to directly measure the success of your labors?
Two changes, particularly around instruction?
Anything that's had a measurable impact on teaching and learning and the educational environment.
Okay, so, so, I'm going to start with behavior systems. I think everywhere I've ever been, but certainly, I'll talk about Great Inupiaf and Voc Tech. So, at Great Inupiaf and Voc Tech, I don't think there was a strong semblance of a system for what teachers should do if a kid behaves in a certain way in their classroom. Where do they go? What's the discipline system look like? So, creating a discipline protocol for teachers that is coherent, understandable, how to address them, levels of detention, next step, suspension, or what have you, I think, made a difference. It makes a difference so that way, teachers understand the next steps for supporting kids around their behaviors. And so, having that strong system and also having, we use Aspen, I know you use Power School, having that data around, you know, discipline reports in our system and also a journaling system to determine what behaviors are happening, even if they aren't ones that you would write up on a discipline report, but might be reactive in a classroom because of emotion or what have you, helps guidance counselors, it helps security, it helps all the people involved to support a kid, understand what a kid is going through behaviorally, socio-emotionally, and all of those things. And so, we have put those things in place through our student support system and student support team system as part of it with the behavior so that we can track how students are doing as far as their behavior. And I would say that across each grade, there's probably a top 10 to 20 kids who really struggle with behavior, socially and emotionally and what have you. And we watch the kids in that group, their behaviors really, really drop because we're able to monitor through the discipline reports that come in to determine whether they need more supports or not to put in place. So, I think behaviorally, that's the system we put in place, and that's important because if kids are not in class because they're in a school suspension or what have you, then they're not learning. So, I think that's really important. I would also say that the student support team generally, that has been in place where our assistant principal, school adjustment counselor, which is a social worker, as you call in this district, guidance counselors, attendance officers, all work together as a team, as a team to support our kids on IEPs, our kids on 504s, our kids who have attendance concerns, who are struggling, so that we can monitor their progress or lack thereof and continue to put supports in place. So, that's broader than just the behavior, and that also includes academics. Because when we see kids starting to fall into that 70% in a classroom, or they're on an IEP, and we know they're having, they're in jeopardy of not passing or promoting to the next grade, there are, it kind of creates an alert and puts systems in place where all these adults are trying to find ways to support them in a classroom. And so, we've seen kids have a lot more growth there through, you know, our monitoring systems so that we can support them. And so, I would say those are the two things that we have done that I think makes a really big difference for kids, for sure.
It sounds like, we use a program called PBIS, which is a positive, specifically oriented, trying to be a positive discipline, if you will. It sounds like you monitored the discipline, but it was still a negative system, i.e. suspensions, et cetera. Do you see a distinction between those two, and do you have any concerns about the fact that what you implemented, it sounds like it was positively impactful, but was still fundamentally negative?
No. I'm trying to be conscious of time. I would be a lot more like, I could probably roll it out a lot more than I am or be more detailed. But what I would say is the whole point of the support team is to try to have alternatives to actual suspensions and ISSs and detentions. So, we have anger management groups, you know, we have a variety of groups that support kids around the issues that are actually, you know, arising from what we're seeing. So, what the team does is takes a deeper dive behind the antecedents to the issues in the classroom. They might bring in a teacher to say, you know, Ms. Jones, the student's having these issues, how can we reach this kid in a different way? Again, in comes the D cap, in comes building out a stronger relationship with the kid by just pulling them off to the side instead of addressing them in front of kids. So, that student support team becomes like the liaison for this group of kids to try to bring in as many supports that aren't disciplinary in nature, okay? And that's the goal, and I think it's had an impact on those data points. I think that, you know, a school as large as ours, we do have to implement in-school suspensions and outside suspensions, but I believe our outside suspensions are really under control because of that system. And we really try to do our best not to suspend kids unless it's a safety concern and just really support kids, and that's where the trauma-informed practices come in, bringing the trauma-informed practice to really get a better understanding of what is it that is causing kids to behave a certain way? And it may just be because of what had, the argument they had with their mom before school or, you know, just having difficulty in the foster home they came from in that morning. So, it's taking a deeper dive and finding, and really sitting as a team to find ways to support that kid outside of, as an alternative to discipline. Positive behavior supports, I would say, doesn't quite work at the high school level. I think it definitely works better at the elementary, starts to wane in the middle. And, you know, having more conversations with kids at the high school level are, will work a little bit better than the, you know, the stickers and the, you know, winning things. And plus, by then, we want to build intrinsic value, not extrinsic value from things that they have, but why it's important to be kind, be nice, be respectful to your teacher, especially for the fact that you're graduating soon. You might go off to the world of work and what have you, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger? What is your experience with and position on veterans-to-teachers programs, and how do you cultivate a strong staff with diverse resumes and experiences to help broaden the worldview of our students?
Can you just repeat the second part of the question? Sorry.
Okay. How do you cultivate a strong staff with diverse resumes and experiences to help broaden the worldview of our students?
Yes. So, for the first part of the question, I do apologize, but I do not have experience with veterans-to-teachers programs. Definitely interested, something I'd want to look into. I don't believe we have, that's not something I've ever been exposed to, but I'd love to learn more about it. Cultivating strong staff, and you said strong staff through hiring? Sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Cultivating strong staff through hiring, I think, is, and that's, I just want to understand your question. Are you talking about attracting diverse staff to the district or?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and also, like, oh, never mind, just, that's good enough.
Yeah, I would, then I apologize. Can you just reread that second part again?
Yeah. How do you cultivate a strong staff with diverse resumes and experiences to help broaden the worldview of our students?
Okay, yes, thank, I understand the question, yes. So, in my eyes, it's really about, you know, the screening process, ensuring that we understand the profile of teacher that is important, that we want in front of our students, you know? And those are people that really love teaching, not just, you know, the subjects that they've learned in college or what have you. And so, for me, I think, because I'm the hiring manager in our school, it's about really looking at their application and seeing what the background is, seeing what they bring to the table, but beyond the application piece, it's the interview, the questions that we're asking to determine, you know, what they know. Do they embrace, you know, kids from all backgrounds? What is their patience level with students who are on IEPs and need supports? Are they, do they believe in kids who struggle and are disengaged? It's really being, for my role as principal, it's gauging just how much teachers know about how to support kids where they are and how willing they are to, you know, give kids everything they need to have a worldview. And so, it is difficult to determine, like, who has the most broadest worldview for that point of the question, but I would say is, once you have teachers in your building, it's about exposing them to professional development and to different teaching strategies that considers, you know, broader worldviews. I just think about, you know, each month, or I think it's every other week, the commissioner will put out a list of, you know, professional development that's available across the state or even the country. And so, just a couple of years ago, there was one on genocide, you know? Send your teachers off to get training on focusing not just on the Holocaust for genocide, but all for, all of the genocide across history in teaching genocide as a concept. And so, I would say, I certainly sent a teacher off to that, two teachers off to that, and to me, that was my way of expanding their worldview beyond what they do, you know, regularly in the planning phase that they have year over year. I think it's just having your eyes open to what's available to broaden, you know, the mindset of teachers and being willing to invest in them going out there and getting that training.
Okay, thank you. Well said, Roger. Joyce?
As you know, we have one school at each level, elementary, middle, and high, in addition to a cooperative school that includes a night school. When developing your budget, how would you ensure that financial resources, which are always shrinking, are distributed equitably at each level? How would you communicate this to administration and staff at each building? And what specific practices would you put into place to ensure that all school buildings are striving to meet the same district goals?
Okay. So, yeah, so you have, with three schools, you certainly want to ensure that there's equity. And so, I think it's important to be working with the principals and for the principals to be working with their teams of people to understand what the needs are in their building, for sure. And also, to be realistic about the fact that, you know, one school has 1,000 kids, another school has 500, another has about 400. So, there are broader needs across the schools, and there's technology in the high school that might vary from what's at the middle school. So, being conscious of the different things that are happening there, but I think it's important to watch every penny, every dollar, and also to have proposal-based budget conversations, really understanding if there's new spending, what is the proposition for that? If there's continued spending, what is the benefit of continuing to spend on that? So, for me, you know, building out a budget has to start early, and I think now's the time where we start having the conversations, but then January is when we really start bringing people in, you know, school teams and having discussions about what are things looking like for FY '27 right now? What are the needs that we have? And let's start looking at the cost centers, and if there is new spending, how are we going to, you know, reallocate funds in order to ensure that we get what we need? And I think the proposal-based budget is important because you're really making a case for why that's important for student success. I think that it's, each, when you mention voice, it's important that voices are heard in that process, and that's through the communicative dialogue that should happen, like I said, starting in December, January, so that we, by February, March, there's an assemble, there's a semblance of understanding of what the real needs are. There is an idea of what the costs actually are due to inflation, et cetera. And then, there's also time to be able to stabilize, you know, the equity across what each school is getting versus the other, okay? I do think that there is a conversation to be had about, you know, the importance of making the high school appealing to students that are leaving. So, I think that, you know, beyond the Chapter 70 funds, finding grant funding to keep growth, you know, and the appeal of the high school, I think, is really important, trying to find streams of income would be really, really important there. And the alignment of goals, that last, the last point you had, if you can just reread the last portion of that? I'm sorry.
How would you, what specific practices would you put into place to ensure that all school buildings are striving to meet the same district goals?
Okay. And so, the practices I would put in place are certainly regular meetings. I think it would be important to have, I like to meet weekly with, you know, with administrators, but I think at least bi-weekly to ensure that goals are being met. I think utilizing a, you know, I use a Trello board, but it's like, it's sort of a system that situates all of the initiatives that are in place and sort of where they are with the completion of them and the tasks of completing them. And so, I would just say, meeting regularly to ensure that we're monitoring the progress on each initiative. And, you know, certainly, the principals would be involved in that, and I think that those meetings have to have data at each one of them to track that progress, and they have to be aligned with what those goals are. I think what happens in districts is that we come up with initiatives in year one. By year two, everyone's like, well, where'd that initiative go? Right? And I think it's so important to keep your finger on the needle in those bi-weekly meetings, we're reminded of what the goals are, and we're continually, you know, principals are continually going back to their schools and ushering and promoting those goals and supporting those goals through professional development. And ensuring that if it's not consultant-based professional development, that we have those key drivers, those key teachers that can support that professional development to their peers. So, that's how I would structure it, that regular communication, so that we're all on the same page, monitoring progress or lack thereof and how to fill those gaps.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
April?
Aside from the experiences you have already described to us in your interview to this point, what do you feel is the biggest hurdle you've to this point, what do you feel is the biggest hurdle you've faced as an administrator? And how did you handle it? What is something you think you did well in that situation? And what is something you learned from that that you'd change moving forward if and when you encounter a similar situation in our district?
I, there are so many hurdles. I would say building, yeah, I mean, so being a principal is, it's a lot of work, and it's amazing work. But a hurdle I can, I could think of is rolling out initiatives generally is very difficult. And so, building consensus, building consensus with people and shifting the thoughts and minds of, of people who have done things a certain way is probably the hardest part, I think, of an, of an administrator. You know, taking a look at data, seeing the gaps in the data, realizing we have to do something. Doing the same thing is probably, we can't do that, so we have to look at doing something different, even though folks have been doing it the same way and they don't want to change. And so, I would say that that is, that has always been a hurdle to overcome. And the way I believe it has been overcome for me is, I, I'm going to go back to it, is just continued communication. Bringing people in, having those conversations, you know, from, and those conversations for me are, they're, they're in a meeting room and they usually are a cross-section of people, depending on what it is, especially if it's an instructional. I can give you an example. The, one of the biggest hurdles was creating an evaluation manual when I first got the Greater New Bedford Voc Tech. And that was, that was a cross-section of union members, administrators, and me at the helm. And there was a lot of disagreement there, a lot of disagreement. And trying to find consensus was difficult, so I created meeting norms. Those meeting norms are things, are norms that I express at the beginning of every meeting. Those are norms that I reminded people of when they needed to be reminded of them. But the most important norm was, we need to agree to disagree and understand that we may not all be in the same place at the end, but we have to try to find consensus. And, and that can be really difficult. But I think conversations are the only way to overcome it. And I think the more difficult conversations teams have, the easier it is. And I think the most important part of that is having someone who's facilitating that process being held to the norms of that. I think that's really, really important. I know there were other parts of that question that I may have missed, but.
What would, something that you would change moving forward, like an obstacle?
An obstacle that I would change moving forward would be, everyone just, just go with the new initiative, right? No, so I, the, the obstacle I would like to remove at this current moment would be the disagreement around our schedule. We're looking to do a brand-new schedule and a schedule overhaul, right? And so, when the folks come to that meeting room to talk about the various different types of schedules that can be had, well, there's a lot of disagreement there, right? Because there's so many different ways that you can design a schedule. And so, you know, that's going to take a lot of work in getting people to try to find consensus. And I'm just going back to consensus, that's, that is what I think we were going to have to, folks will have to continue to work on and be in a position where they're comfortable not getting exactly what they want, but kind of coming up with compromises, right? And I think that's through continued conversations, realizing that it's not personal and, and, you know, being willing to disagree, but then leave, cross that threshold, and nobody hates each other. But we still are working toward the same common goals. That's what I would, that's, that's what I would want to change, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, you made it to the last question.
It's the last question, wow.
Our community survey conducted by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees received hundreds of responses and indicated that the number-one quality our stakeholders want in our next superintendent is honesty and transparency in decision-making. Why do you believe this is important in educational leadership? And then, what would you do in your first six months to build credibility with teachers, families, students and civic leaders?
Thank you for that question. So I think, so transparency is obviously very important and people expect it. And so, it's, it's important that leaders do that. And so, as a superintendent, I would, I would make that a key goal. And why is that important? Because folks want to know what's going on in the district. They want to know what the key drivers are, and they want to believe, and they want to trust, that what's going on is for the benefit of kids and for the benefit of the work that they're doing. And so, I think that conversations that are had with district teams need to be conversations that end up being had with teachers. So it's whole-district approach, right? With initiatives, and that goes down to everything. And so, for me, building out the credibility, for me, with the, the community and the district, just means getting out there and communicating, visiting schools regularly, bringing people in to have conversations about what they would like to see in the district, what are some of the changes that are necessary. Getting out there into the community, meeting, meeting with folks, meeting with Veterans for Teachers, meeting with the Rotary Club, first of all, to promote the school district, but also to let them understand what the goals of the district are, keeping education on their minds, right? Getting out there and doing that. And so, you know, I, I thought it was an amazing opportunity to be with the community from three to four on Tuesday because I got to hear from them. And I, and I'm walking out in the parking lot, and I'm, and I was still having conversations with teachers and other folk. It was like, three or four people still talking to me in the parking lot. And that was amazing. And for me, that was me building trust with them, having real, candid conversations about my philosophy of, of education and, and my concern for students, especially for a district that has seventy percent high needs. And so, it's really about getting out there and being unabashed about the realities, you know, not sugarcoating, you know, the nature of things in Wareham, addressing them as they are. We're not going to sugarcoat them, but then we're going to talk about what the solutions are. I'm not known for, for holding my tongue, you know, but I am very much one who tries to build consensus and, and certainly try to find ways to honestly build strong relationships with people and key stakeholders. And that would be the, for me, the fun part of the job, building trust with people. You didn't get to be in my district that long yesterday, and I wish you could have. I wish you could have been there for the morning entry. I wish you could have been there for, during lunchtime. And I wish you could meet my school committee, because I think that's what I've done well, establish trust with people and, and build credibility around being transparent, sometimes to a fault. But I think that is what makes people feel really good about the district, feel good about their kids being in this district. And I think that'll be the part of the job that I would actually excel the most in. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm going to take advantage of the fact that we still have a little time left. I'd like to come back to my first question. You acknowledge that I was correct in saying public education is under attack. And I articulated four areas, for example, where the attack is felt. This attack is, is significant in a number of ways. It impacts citizen support for school budgets. It impacts educators' desires to be educators. They're just wanting to be part of a profession that is respected versus attacked is a very significant reason. It impacts people's willingness to stay educators. We don't have enough applicants for teach, empty teaching positions. So, what do you think is the cause? What's, why is public education under attack?
Why is it under attack? You know, I think the constituency, the taxpayer, you know, wants to see that there's a return on their investment, you know? So I think that a lot of people are involved with that. Parents want to make sure that the school is safe. Parents want to make sure that the education, their kid's actually going to leave there with a great education. So they're invested, you know? The citizenry that don't have kids want to know, why am I spending this money on this institution, you know? So I think it's, it's under attack for that reason. It's under attack because there are some folks that are concerned about what curriculum is being taught to students in the classroom, whether it be health, whether it be textbooks.
So I agree with you.
Yeah.
Do you think it's legitimate to think it may not be a good investment? Do you think it's legitimate for them to think it may not be safe for their children? There's no question in my mind that's part of the reason that parents choose to go somewhere else is because of the behavior of a very small percentage of our students, but it gets extrapolated into the schools must be unsafe. So, are they correct that it's not a good investment? Are they correct that it is unsafe? I'm trying to get at the, what do you believe to be the reason that it's under attack?
Yeah, so for each of those, whoever we're talking about, it's their truth. I mean, so they, if they, if there's a concern of safety and, and that it's not a place that is really impactful for education, then, then that's the case. And I would validate that for them, but I would want to understand why. And, you know, why is it under attack? I, I, again, I'm just going to go back to the points I made before. You know, there's, there's curriculum that people don't love. I think that there are certain schools that are not safe, for sure, and parents, parents don't want to send their, their kids to a certain high school when there's another high school down the road that is very safe, right? And so, there's, I think what has to happen is, certain districts that have more people in it, that are cynical of the, of that school system, need to take a really hard look in the mirror and not, and not be afraid to say, we're an unsafe school. We're a school that is not passing kids. So what, now what? Right? And I think, I think that what ends up happening is people don't take that hard look, number one, and they're not willing to make the changes necessary, you know? And I, and I think for the citizenry that sees that that's the case, it's the persistent low scores, the persistent unsafe schools, they're frustrated, and, and they say what they have to say about it. Again, you know, I am, I am of the belief that, again, I worked at Wheeling City, I left the land of milk and honey at Greater New Bedford Voc Tech to go to Keith Middle School, Level One School, to try to make a change in a place that was very difficult. People were very cynical. They didn't believe in that school system. But I tell you what, I put so much energy into getting them to believe into this place. I brought security into the school. I created discipline systems. We made sure that each teacher was actually teaching to a curriculum, and we're teaching engaging instruction. So that by the end of year one, before the end of year one, people felt better about sending their kids to school. We, how? Metrics? Attendance. And so, I mean, people have a right to, to, to attack something that does not bear fruit. And in many cases, we see that it's not bearing fruit.
So you seem to be suggesting that they may absolutely be correct in questioning the value, but the solution is administrative leadership?
That's one. It could be administrative. So administrative leadership, if I'm, if there's a fail, if there's a failing metric in the district that I lead, there's nobody else responsible for it but me. That's number one. I have to find the solution for it. That's what I'll be evaluated on, and that's what I'm comfortable with. As a principal, everything I do is, is, there's a metric to it, and, and there's a, you know, a good or bad result in what I do. And so, I, I think that it's, it's, it is incumbent to take that look in the mirror, see what's not working and address it. Because for someone who is attacking the school, they might be right. They might be right, and it's incumbent upon me to listen to what their concern is. I don't get too caught up in the politics of it. I get caught up in the so what, now what of it. There's a concern there. I don't know that that concern exists, because when I look at the data, I don't see it. There's a concern that comes back, let's talk about it, because that's observable. I see that. So I think a lot of what I have to do as an administrator is, is filter in what is actually worthy of, of my efforts in improving the district. Because I think there are a lot of attacks coming. Teachers feel attacked by the amount of new regulations and expectations that come from DESI. My job is to try to push back and hold back. There's a lot of external factors, and I think the job of a leader is to try to filter out which, which one of those actually matter, because they don't all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any additional follow-ups or questions that they might have asked? You good, Kevin?
I'm good.
Roger?
It's not really a question, it's just a comment about, on your second question, Jeff, and how Borley had said that he believes that phones should be removed from the classroom. And I mean, that's, I echo that. I believe that laptops should be removed also. I think they, they need to think. They're not thinking. And, and I, I just read an article about, about AI and how it's, it's just robbing the kids of their creativity, because it's giving them the answers that, you know, may be correct, but how did they arrive at the answers? And that's what so many times, and when I was going to school, you needed, you know, whether you got the answer right or wrong, you needed to show your work. How did you get that? How did you think about that? And I don't think the kids are, are doing that at this point. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but, you know.
I love the point, though. How did you think? How did you think about that answer?
So to convert that into a question, if you will, allow me to. Where, what's the role of Chromebooks, laptops, that, those kinds of things in your school?
Yes. Phones are in yonder pouches from the moment kids enter the school. We started that, this school year. And that's where they are until they leave. And that is so that way teachers can teach and kids can learn. I knew that that would be a concern, not even so much for the kids, but for parents. And so, I got started last January promoting that and sharing the why behind it, the data around suicide rates for females, how distracted kids are, the low test scores. Because again, building consensus, I wanted parents to get upset, get frustrated, put question to it. Give me six months to answer those questions. Deal with the concerns that parents have, the kids have. Get everyone prepared, lay out the policy, understand it, so that we, by day one, there hasn't been a blip. Kids come to me and say, thank you. We have surveys that come back saying, I'm glad that this is the case. My kid loves the fact that they don't, that, that they, they can think freely and not be so caught up with the FOMO of what's the next like and what have you. Chromebooks, we have one-to-one, I believe, just like the high school. So kids do have Chromebooks, and a lot of the assignments are on Google Classroom. I'll be, I'll be honest with you, though, I do love what Harvard has implemented, at least in some of their, their uni, their colleges, is that there are laptop-free classrooms, where they want kids to come to school, youngsters, you know, college students to come to school, prepared with a notebook and a pen to think, discuss, converse. And I'm of the belief that reading, writing and speaking is the way that we learn and retain information the best. And so, I love what you just said about that. Imagine if there weren't laptops. But post-COVID, put, put laptops in our hands, and you know what happens when technology, when we have technology, it's hard to put it down. And so, I started with phones, and someday I would love to maybe do the same with laptops. Because I really do think kids need to be talking more. And one last point I'll make is that when you walk through our, our lunchroom, it's unbelievable, because kids are actually talking now and looking at each other and discussing and, like, being humans. It's like, I've seen humanity restored because of it. And it's not the fake thing where it's like, here's a lockbox. You put it, put it in the corner of the classroom where kid does it, maybe, maybe not. They're in yonder pouches. So no kids have phones. It's pretty cool. It's humanity, unlike we get to see it these days. Powerful.
Do you have any closing thoughts you'd like to share with us? It's entirely up to you. You've been great, and we appreciate your time, but if you had, have, a minute or two for closing thoughts, we'll be glad to listen.
Yes, I, just thank you for having me. I'm grateful to be a part of this portion of, of the phase. You know, I'm grateful to be here. I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of this process, being able to see your district for numerous hours, meeting so many people that are passionate about this district. That is the one thing I walk away with. And that actually added to the draw that I have to want to be the superintendent in this district. I have worked with kids on IEPs for a very long time, kids who are limited. I've worked in schools that have greater higher, high needs than seventy percent, so I understand the needs. And I feel like I've really connected very well with students, high-fiving in the, in the cafeteria, with staff, and with parents in that first school committee meeting. So there's a connection that I have already felt that has drawn me even closer to this district. I appreciate the candidness in, in your follow-up questions, like, that's something I enjoy, and the dialogue I would love to have from superintendent moving forward. I will tell you, if there's a concern at all that I don't have experience, my, if you look at my role, my role, although I've been principal, I'm doing two jobs. I'm literally a central administrator and a building administrator, building out budgets, district improvement plans, and, and union contracts while managing twenty-two hundred kids and two-hundred-and-fifty staff, doing it with a smile on my face. First thing in the morning, waving to parents in front of the flagpoles, and then seeing kids off on the buses at the end, jumping into a school committee meeting at six o'clock that I've been doing for the last five years. I'm not worried about the workload as being a superintendent. What I'm worried about and I'm concerned about is the same thing that the people who I've talked to over the last three days is worried about, making sure that we can handle the budget constraints to ensure that kids get what they need to be successful in this district. And I'm committed to creative ideas to do that, committed to talking about chapter seventy-four, innovative pathways, and things that may not have been on the radar at the levels that I understand them. And so, there is an excitement that I have for this district, and, and I, and I believe that the goals are about increasing student success and really building a culture of excellence in this district. And I, and I tell you now, you have three really, really strong candidates, and I think that if you were to choose me, I don't think you'll go wrong. And I, and I would be absolutely excited and delighted at the opportunity to grace this, this district with my presence, especially those awesome little, those youngsters. to grace this, this district with my presence, especially those awesome little, those youngsters. Because I haven't been around, uh, the little, little guys in a long time, so. So thank you for this opportunity, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Worley.
Okay, we have about 15 minutes. As a technicality? Yes, we'll be recessed for 15 minutes. Welcome, Eric.
How are we doing?
Let's make sure the green light is on, Eric.
Yes, the green light is on.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back from our 15-minute recess. We will resume, it's approximately 5:46, according to my watch, and we are about to begin the interview of Eric Joffe, who is the current Assistant Superintendent at Plymouth Public Schools. Eric, you're welcome to make, but it's up to you, a short opening statement, okay? If not, we'll just start right in with the questions, what would you like?
No, I can just, a brief statement.
Go for it.
My resume is out there. Obviously, my experience has been at the secondary level, middle and high school, as a principal for 17 years in a couple of different systems. In the past six years, I've been at Plymouth Public Schools, working as an Assistant Superintendent, overseeing HR personnel matters, working closely with the unions and the staff at the 14 schools. Excited to make it to this far in the process, I know you guys have put a lot of time and energy into this. One part of this process, so I know you guys have been, uh, working very hard the last couple of weeks, so I appreciate the attention that you guys are giving this very important position, so. Glad to be here tonight.
Great, so we've got approximately an hour and a quarter. If we finish a little before that, there may be some back follow-ups to the, to the questions. And we'll let you know if, if for any reason, we, including you, and the committee are running out of time, but it, it looks like the hour and a quarter is about the right amount of time.
Perfect.
Okay, there'll be three questions from each, uh, committee member, and there will probably be follow-ups to, in response to your, to your responses, and we'll see how it goes.
Sounds good.
Okay? I have the privilege of being first, uh, on the questions. Public education is under attack from a variety of sources. Whether it's advocates for issuing vouchers, parents of minority children who believe segregated schools deny equal resources and impact achievement, culturally conservative citizens who believe teaching and curriculum is slanted to the left, or taxpayers who advocate against rising property talks, taxes, there is no longer a nationwide consensus or trust in the integrity of public education. What would you do to change this perception in Wareham, and reduce the number of parents who send their children outside of our public school system?
So, addressing that last part, you know, we have to understand, why are they going, what's the reason? You know, what is the purpose that families are electing to go outside? And that can be done through, you know, surveys, exit interviews. I want to understand, what's the draw, not to, to be a Viking? You know, I look forward to a system that is a K-12 system where students stay here, they want to be a part of it, they want to be part of the culture, they want to, they want to graduate from Wareham High School, not another school system after spending their first six or seven years here. So we want to understand a little bit more of why that is occurring. I know some could certainly be vocational tracks, and they have opportunities. And it costs money to build those programs to keep the students here. But is that the primary reason, or is that a secondary reason? So I think, understanding and getting your head around the why allows us to have a better idea of how to, like, attack that problem. I heard the number, it was 245, I believe, was going out, around that number. I would want to look at historical trend. Is it, is it growing in the last 10 years on the number of students going out of district? Is that a recent phenomenon? How many kids are coming in to Wareham? I think the number I heard was 39. I'd want to know what the purpose or reason, why are they coming into Wareham? What's their draw to come here? So I think you have to really understand, you know, the dynamic behind it, before you can, you know, put forward a path as to how to fix it. Like in anything, you know, you want to research it and understand it. Education does look very different now, I, I think, um, there's a larger voice that's coming from, from families that have certain expectations in the classroom, or in the schools, and they're questioning things. I don't think that the quality of education has changed over the years, I think teachers have even gotten better. I think our applicant pool is smaller, I see that at a larger district. The number of candidates that you have each year getting into the educational field is getting smaller and smaller. So we really have to rely on those that, that have that passion to be in education. It's a very rewarding job. You know, teachers will talk about those aha moments, uh, that make a connection with the student. And, and we have to foster that, we have to, we have to hold on to that, and we want to, we want to build that across all of our grade spans. So our kids feel like, and our families feel like, they're getting the best education possible. And we're doing it sometimes with less and less. Federal funding, grants, keeps getting, get, you know, cut at times, and you know, we still need those funds to, to survive, to move forward. Otherwise, it just falls on the town, and it kind of touches bases on your, on the property taxes, and you know, that's, that's hard, these tough times, you know, it's expensive, and people don't need their taxes being raised. But we also want to provide the best possible education for the students that are, that live here in Wareham. So it's, there's a lot of factors. That's, you know, it's a good question, it's a lengthy question, but it kind of covers a lot of those needed areas.
So the why. Have you ever, two, two whys? Have you ever done any surveys in prior districts? Had any reason to do prior surveys in, in other districts as to why you're not getting the, the applicants, the students, or the, the students are leaving? Or is this relatively unique to Wareham?
In my experiences, this, this would be unique. Now, when I was in South Florida, you had a choice between five schools, high schools, in our, in our demographic area, geographic area. So, in that ass, in that sense, we had to draw and, and really kind of promote why students would want to select your school. And the more students that selected your school on the front end, you had a better opportunity to be successful. And so, it was finding programs. So what I did on that particular case is, the high school I was at did not have an IB program, a performing arts center, a vocational track. We were kind of surviving off of what they refer to as tradition. And I felt like we needed more than that, so we sat at the table. We did interviews with students, with our, our staff, our families, what is it that would be unique that you would like to see? And this was back in 2005, 2006, and we started a math, science, technology academy. So it was very, on the front end of STEM. And we built that, and it started to change the dynamic of students selecting to come to our school. So, 20, 20 years ago, we were having that conversation, how do you draw kids in? When I went to my experience in Georgia, it was a very similar K-12 school system, but the school system didn't allow families to go outside the district, so it was never a, a conversation about coming in or going out. Plymouth, we do have students that go out. If we can't provide it, um, an opportunity at one of our comprehensive schools, Bristol Aggie, well, we don't have an agricultural program. We looked at the cost of building an agricultural program, it's just so expensive for the 10 students that were going out to take that opportunity. We, and it fluctuates, we sometimes have 10, I think as high as 20 students have gone. But we just couldn't find the cost to build an ag program that would sustain in Plymouth. So it is definitely unique in this system, so that's something that I would want to get my head around, and make sure that I'm, uh, understanding the why, as to why that is occurring, and what are things that we can to try to control, or try and change that, that trajectory for students.
But your, your gut tells you, at least one of the areas you would look at would be programmatic.
I think, well, I would assume, it's got to be program. I have to assume it's a perception of what's going on, it may be one of the, at the high school level, because that seems to be the age bracket where students are going. So I'd want to understand, is it program? Is it something else? And that, I think, takes a little bit of time, as you start working with the stakeholders that have been a part of this over the years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger?
Hi. What is your experience with the collective bargaining process? And how have you put into practice the balancing of retaining talented, experienced educators, while also attracting and improving the livelihood of younger teachers? And how would you strive to accomplish this balance in Wareham without needing town meeting to make up for potential shortfalls?
Well, that's a good question, and that was one of the areas that I had to learn real quick. We did not have unions and collective bargaining groups in the South. So when I first came to Plymouth, that was one of the tasks I was responsible for. We had a team we put together to do all of our collective bargaining agreements. We have eight bargaining groups. And my job was to lead those, facilitate them, work closely with the unions, with our administrative team, to try and settle our contracts. Unfortunately, to your point about, you know, shortfalls, that has been happening more routinely than we would like to see happen, and that's happening in Plymouth as well. We have to look at the needs of the schools, we're looking at class sizes, we're looking at supplies, we're looking at programs, everything that builds that budget. 80%, 78, 80% of your budget is going to be tied up in personnel. So then that leaves you the remaining amount for programs, supplies, capital projects, different things that you're trying to implement within the school system. So you're trying to negotiate those. You want to, you want to retain staff. You don't want to have an outstanding teacher that spent seven, eight, nine years working with you, all-star in the classroom, but then they leave to go to a different district because potentially they could make more. You want to have people start here and finish their career here. You have to make it, um, you want to have your salaries competitive. One of the things we had to do at our last contract cycle in Plymouth was to make a salary adjustment, because we were in that same problem. We were having people leaving. The retention was hard, because we had a lower pay scale than some of our surrounding communities. So we knew we were going to have to make an adjustment in that, and we did. By doing that, though, there, there is that, the, the offsetting of that, as you saw, of only X amount of money, that we had to reduce some positions. Now, we didn't terminate anybody, I spent a lot of time working with staff that if a position at one school was going to have to be, um, eliminated, that I was working with them to get them in another school. And we were very successful in that, because you, a lot of times you'll use retirements, or just natural attrition, resignation, or a vacancy perhaps, to try and roll people in. So working with the staff to make sure people aren't without a job. So we were very successful, last couple of years we've had to do that. Some people went into retirement or resonate, or filled resignation spots. I think you have to have a balance between the veterans that you referred to, and our new teachers coming out of education. I think both parties can learn from each other. Things look very different than when I was in the classroom teaching 25 years ago, than it is today. And I think you need to find that blend, the tools that our young teachers are coming out of college with, are, are foreign to some of our veteran teachers, and they have to, they have to lean on each other. So I, I like to have that blend. One of the things that, obviously, when you're having retirements, and people are on the top of the pay scale, when you're bringing them into the school system the next hire, you sometimes can bring in at a lower amount. So you're hopefully making some cost savings there with your staffing. But the collective bargaining process is a, um, it can be a collaborative approach. You know, you're trying to work together, there are employees, there are unions representing them. But we want people to be proud to work in the school system. So you want to have an agreement that both sides feel good about. You can't get everything that you want, there's a trade-off at times. And I think we've, I've worked really hard with the unions and with our district leaders to find that balance, so that, at the end of the day, when we close the agreement for the next three years, and we have the successor agreement coming up, that people feel good about it. But it doesn't just end once you make that agreement. I spent this past month working with both our unions on MOAs, because we found that, within the contract, maybe the intention of certain language was not what the purpose was, and we need to adjust it, and we didn't want to wait three years. A good example of that, I could share, is we were doing a, um, a differential pay, for example. We had, uh, some of our cafeteria staff, 10 years ago in the contract, said that if they took a higher position, because we asked them to, the cook was out, but we had a cafeteria worker filled in that role, that they would get a, um, a $2 an hour increase. Basically, they would go to the first step of the cook. Over 10 years, that difference in pay almost became where, if someone took that higher rate job at the first step, they were going to get a 50 cents deduction from their paycheck. That doesn't make sense for anybody. We found that, we called the union, we said, we have a proposal to make right by the employee, and then we, instead of basing it on steps, because step progressions change, you could have a four-step 10 years ago, and now you have an eight-step. And sometimes, one of the negotiation strategies is to drop step one, add step 11, you know, just trying to find that balance in, in salary. So we called, we contacted the union, we sat with all the stewards, we explained the situation, answered questions, everybody was in favor of it. We changed the language in the contract immediately, and then put a, an MOA in place to automatically put it in the next contract. So collective bargaining happens during a timeframe, but it can be opened at any time because of stuff that's going on in, in the school system, so. A lot of work has been done in that part.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, Roger?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Could you describe the most significant public relations crisis you've managed that involved high levels of media scrutiny and community outrage? Detail your three-part communication plan for staff, parents, and the media, and what you did to actively rebuild trust within the community afterward.
This is a hard one. Not hard to answer, just hard to share. First day as a high school principal. Got my first opportunity, I'm going to a large high school, 2,400 kids. Very excited to get the opportunity. One of the youngest principals in South Florida. I get a call, uh, the week before, I was to introduce myself to the student body, that a student was missing. And so, I'm working with the family, never met the family prior, because it's a new school for me. And unfortunately, everybody's looking, couldn't find her. The night before school started, I got a call from the sheriff that she was found, and she had been murdered. And, um, I'll never forget her name, but I never met her. So I'm walking into a school that needed significant change, and a tragedy like that has occurred. And it was also, uh, the, the person of interest was somebody that was also familiar to the school. So, walking in on day one, large media, outpouring, students hearing news for the first time, families understanding what's going on. I'm making communications to as best we can, because it's, it's real time, this is happening. Family was, um, obviously devastated. The student body, it was a popular senior, that wasn't going to be able to be with her classmates. Finding the right way to stage media coming in, because they're going to try and get a story. You know, those kind of stories draw viewership. So they wanted to see pain on, on kids, which was just unfortunate. I had to set up a, almost like a media room on the school, talk to some staff and some students that felt comfortable enough. And we had some, some dialogue with the media, but I ended up stopping it at one point, just because I could read, you know, the, the feelings on the students was, it was a hard day. But we got through it. And I always say, I got through that day, and they don't prepare you for that in any educational leadership course. And I've got 12 other examples, I've, I lost 13 students under my principalship over the years, just for different reasons. And that's probably the most difficult part of, of being in the schools, is when something like that occurs. We got through that moment, we worked with the family, we The family started up a scholarship in her honor, so we were able to share her, her, her story. She was big into performing arts and gave out scholarships yearly. So that was, to answer your question, that was probably the most challenging one, day one.
Okay. Thank you.
No follow-up for that, right?
No, no follow-up for that, yeah.
April?
Well, that's a tough pill to swallow after going into another question. What are your thoughts on the evaluative process of the superintendent? And how should your annual evaluation be integrated into the strategies and action plans you put into place to move the district forward? And please be as specific as possible. How would you respond if your evaluation wasn't strong and reflected a need for significant changes? And would legal action ever be recourse you'd take against the school committee? And how, in your estimation, does this play into the process of strategic planning for the district on a multi-year basis?
I believe the, the goals for the superintendent should be reflective of the strategic plan you have in place. Your, your district directives, initiatives. I think working closely with the schools is going to be what drives those. I would hope that the goals I had in place were goals that the other district administration could be a part of as. Depending what, what they might be, I'd have to really dig in to see where the, the strategic plan falls. To help build those goals. In my short time here, there's ideas in my head already where I would want to, to make some goals. And I'm assuming or hoping I could connect them into those, to the strategic plan for the district. How would I respond if it wasn't strong and reflection? I, I think, my job as a high school principal wasn't to hire a teacher and then fire a teacher. My job as a high school principal was to hire a teacher and provide supports for them. And if they needed improvements, I would want them to know how they could get that improvement. I do feel like, over the years, spanning a course of, you know, seventeen years in high schools, six years at, at Plymouth. I've been a part of several dismissals. I don't believe that anybody that I've been in that process with could say they didn't know why. I think you have to have very real, hard conversations at times. I think you get more value out of that. If you're looking for improvement, and I expect improvement, I'm gonna have to show them the pathway to make improvements. So if I'm struggling in an area that is being identified, I'd want to know about it. I'd wanna know how I could make those improvements. And then I would expect my personalities to, to, to hit the ground running and, and try and meet you to where you feel that I would need to be. I, I don't even know how to respond to the other one. No. I guess as far as a, a, a legal challenge or anything like that, that's, no, that's not who I am, so.
Thank you.
If you didn't, if you didn't have to worry about the budget, the school committee, teachers' union, or public opinion. One initiative would you champion here at Wareham to improve student achievement? And what research or data would you have used to come up with that decision? And then, how would you implemented a layered strategy to ensure a smooth outcome and how would you measure its success?
Every kid's different. You want every kid to have opportunity for success. So you have to, if I had wide-open, you know, wallet, I'm looking to be able to provide programs that can hit our highest achieving students. And our students that need the most support. And finding that balance. I don't expect every kid to go on to a four-year college. There are kids that are gonna have very successful lives going through a trade in the general workforce. We're gonna have students go into the military. We have students that are preparing to, to work for the family business, whatever it might. I want every student to have, I think we talked about this before, live their best life. What does that mean? That means something different for every child. So if I had that open wallet, I would wanna make sure that I had the programs that the kids are looking for. And that can change. That can change from, from graduation cycles. You have students that might be really passionate about the medical field right now. Which is good, because we need more people in the medical field. But that could change in ten years. I, I've told my former students, and I'll, I'll say it again, that, you know. We're trying to prepare our, our young adults coming out of high school for jobs in the next ten years that don't even exist yet. Fifty percent of those jobs, they haven't even really come about. When you think of ten years ago, the jobs that kids are getting into right now. Cybersecurity, drones, all of the, the technology, the things that are available right now, what's it gonna look like in ten years? So building a, a program that allows students to use their interests, their talents. You gotta keep that, that ability to have that social interaction with one another. How to find data, you can find, I mean, these kids are walking around with computers in their pockets, they can find the information. It's how, what they're gonna do with that information that I think is, is critical, so. I would want, there's five hundred, five hundred and fifty students at the high school. My hope would be if we had that availability, we'd have eight hundred kids at the high school. Because they wouldn't feel like they have to go anywhere to meet their needs. So that would be, that would be my drive.
Good?
Yep, thank you.
MCAS scores in Massachusetts, including in Wareham. Have seen a decline for many years, a couple of decades. The latest NAEP, National Assessment for Educational Progress. For literacy comprehension across the nation. Have never been lower. And yet, no one seems to know what to do about it. And no one in, in educational communities has stepped forward to accept responsibility. Who or what do you think is responsible? For the decline? And what will you do, do to bring some degree of accountability to Wareham Public Schools?
Yeah. It's the blame game. You know, it's the passing the buck. You know, in high schools, you're often saying, well, they're not coming prepared. They're below grade level when they get to me in high school, how am I to, to make achievement? Middle school can say the same at the elementary school. Elementary can say that it's happening before they come to, to school, they're not coming ready. We have to get that out of our mind and figure out, how do we come together as a, as a cohesive unit? So that we could address literacy at the earliest level. Building those foundational skills. If it's starting with the pre-K programs or working with our families. One of the things that we implemented in, in Georgia was we started a reading program for families at the hospital after they're given birth. We call it was a birth to four-year-old program. We wanted to hit them in hospitals in the maternity suites and here's a, here's a, a, a care package from Fannin County Schools. We're giving to you these books, some strategies, so you can start reading to your child. We wanted to get it in their hands from the moment there was a child in the house. Working towards that early literacy period, those foundational skills. Everybody will have more opportunity when they can read, write, comprehend. We have to use the resources that we have available to us. We have to rely on experts, which are gonna be our classroom educators. We have to work with the families to do in literacy nights or any activity that can draw the, the families to participate in it too. It's not anyone's issue, it's, it's, it's the whole system. And I look forward to working in a smaller. Community, because maybe we can make more attempts and more change at that. Because I think the outcome is, obviously, we talk about the, the, the picture of the graduate, the vision of the graduate. That's the ultimate celebration in a school system is when someone gets that diploma and is walking their cross. As much as I was a high school person and we wanted to celebrate our high school successes, that's a system success. When the student has met all of the standards to receive that high school diploma. And that should be celebrated across every school that you have K-12. I was in the, the high school, and I shared this after my visit, the pre-K class. Watching those ten students there on campus, which I thought was ingenious to, to have a program where early childhood students have an interest. That could work with those students on a day-to-day basis. Based on current trends, I feel like ten of those kids, three or four of them might not graduate from, from Wareham. I, I would wanna be a part of changing that, where all ten graduate from Wareham.
But don't misunderstand, I understand what you're saying. But I wanna know why the decline has occurred in the first place. What has changed from twenty-five years ago? So that you need to be doing those remedial things, that you need to be doing things to reverse decline? Why has the decline occurred in the first place? When the whole nation is at its lowest level since they started doing the nation's report card?
If I can figure that out, then we're gonna retire, I suppose. You know, when you look at why, you know, I feel like there's more supports in place now than when I was in school. You know, we had one teacher, we didn't have parent support, we didn't have reading specialist or instructional supports. Maybe it was the, the support I had in, in, in my, in the household I grew up in.
You understand, if you don't know why, I'm not an educator.
Yeah.
Okay? If you don't know why, then we're in even more trouble than I thought.
Yeah.
Right? Because somebody has to know why so we can fix the problem. And you're saying it's a mystery to you, is that a fair statement?
Well, I don't say, I don't know if it's the, the ends, the, the end zones changing, like the expectations are higher. Why are kids struggling now versus, I think kids have struggled historically? I mean, we've had higher dropout rates in the past than we do currently. I don't know, I don't know if I can sit here and give you an explanation as to why there's a national crisis. That across the nation, kids are struggling with early literacy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger?
So safety in schools continues to be a critical issue for students, staff, and their families. How would you assess the current safety initiatives and protocols in Wareham Public Schools? How often would you reevaluate safety procedures? And who would you involve in those conversations? And what would be your course of action if, God forbid, there were a safety emergency?
So the number one goal. For a, for me, is safety in schools. Without safety, you can't have instruction moving forward. If people are worried about their safety in class, whether it's the teacher or the student. You have to have safety measures in place. I was doing my walkthroughs yesterday and I stayed longer than I think I probably needed to, because we were on a, a time schedule. But I came across a music classroom and the teacher was doing a fantastic job of explaining to the students. Because it was a, a switch in class periods, uh, timeframes, trimester. Was going over the safety procedures in their classroom, how to lock the doors, what to do if, if the, the call came that there was something going on on campus. I would hope that that's happening in every classroom, but to assess it, I would have to see it. I know that the kids in that particular classroom, God forbid something were to happen, they feel, I felt like they would know what to do. I often say, your body can't go where your mind hasn't gone first. So if you're not practicing safety drills, there's hundreds of thousands of schools across the country. You hope that you never have to deal with one of these situations, but you have to be prepared for it if it was, it were to come. Having a safety council would be critical. And the members of that should be, you know, local law enforcement, your school resource officer, or emergency management. Your building leaders, making sure that the community supports are gonna arrive on campus in those events and they know what to do. Unfortunately, the majority of these situations, these tragedies that happen, happen in a very short period of time. You know, three to five minutes is the average length. But then you're gonna spend the next several, several hours with reunification. And that's a, a piece that maybe we're not always comfortable with. I think high school staff probably do more preparation and drills. Than they do at elementary. And, and just because of nature, you, you know, you don't wanna scare our students, but they have to be prepared. I used to think in my mind, in Georgia, we used, we were required to do a fire drill every month, every month. A person hadn't lost their life since nineteen fifty-five in a, in a school fire, but we do it every month. Our kids are routine with it. But for a, a tragedy that occurred, we don't do a lot of active shooter trainings and, and we just expect people to, what are they gonna do? And I didn't want staff to freeze in a moment, so we did a lot of drills. We did drills with local law enforcement coming through the schools. They need to understand the, the layout and the foundation of the schools because things are happening so quickly, unfortunately. Making sure the exterior building is secure. And that's simple, that's just walking around. I know sometimes we get, we get in a hurry, we wanna peg a door open. But that's what happened in Invaldi, Texas, that gave somebody access to the building. And that's something we're trying to eliminate, we wanna keep the dangers out. And it doesn't have to be that extreme. It could be, you know, other things that are going on, something in the community. Where there, the police are looking for somebody. It happened to my niece just recently in college. There was an incident off-campus, but it was going near her college and they went into a stay-in-place lockdown. Until the community had the situation under control. So you have to know. You have to, and I'd have to know, I know there's a, a communication tool, I'm not as familiar with it that they use. I'd wanna become more familiar with it. But you have to get real information out in real time. The hard challenge we have in the schools is social media. So if something was to come out, we have so many students with communication devices, they're sending out messages. And then it grows and then all of a sudden there's comments on, you know, all things Wareham or whatever the local thing is. And people are starting to write their own narrative about what's going on. It creates hysteria over something that might not be a hysteria moment. So having a mechanism in place, to get back to your question, you know, the, the people that are charged with the safety of the students and the staff. Need to come to the table, we meet monthly currently. Emergency management, I'm working closely with them right now on that reunification piece. Because I feel like that's a piece we just really haven't spent a lot of time on. Where we have spent more time on the, the initial side, the drills, preparedness for stay-in-place, you know, for lockdown. So critical, but it's the most important thing, making sure that there's a safe learning environment.
What's that? Joyce?
The level of special education students in Wareham is well above the state average. Please tell us about your experience working with this population of students. And could you tell us about two special education initiatives you have put into place? Were they successful and how did you measure that success?
So as a high school principal, worked very closely, not as close in my current role. I work with the special ed department on any needs that they need support with, with staff, but probably more in my high school lens. I saw the percent as well and I thought it was high. And so that was bringing me questions as far as, you know, what does the process look like? As students are being identified for special needs. What does that process look like here? Are we following, I know you guys have the, the district curriculum accommodation plan, the D cap. And I saw that you guys were kinda mirroring something from another system, I think it was maybe Sandwich or another system, the MICAP. So looking at that, like are we meeting those needs for the students? Whether you're doing a response to intervention? What are we putting in place before it gets to the point of, of services? One of the programs I did work on at the high school was more of a, an integration, integrated approach. We had students that were almost big brother, big sisters to our special needs students. And they became their, their rock. They spent a lot of time with the students, bringing them into like a unified setting. We did some unified sports in the South. And it was an opportunity for our regular ed students to, to work closely with some of our highest need students. And the relationships that were built and the supports that were put in place is, was just a wonderful thing to see. I think our special ed, special ed students, we, we kinda go with that same mindset, that least restrictive environment, and that's our goal. We don't wanna have students, when I was in school, I, it, it's almost like the hidden classroom, it's right out front. I changed our drop-off at the high school when I first got there, because it was in the back of the school. And I almost felt like we're hiding our students and it just gave me that disgusted feeling. So we changed where the classrooms were, where the visibility was, so the students were more connected to the programs for our, for our highest need students. And then going back to. And then going back to that integration in the inclusive, inclusion classroom. I've always been a big supporter of doing the inclusion classroom, if the student can handle it. But I think the bigger thing is looking at that percent, I think the number I heard was around thirty-six percent, which is much higher than the state average, so I want to understand, how are we getting to that point? Is it, is it truly just what it is, you know, the numbers, but I want to see how we got to that point?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
April?
Our district has a unique makeup of students, including a high level of diverse students, students with behavioral needs, and students from social, economically disadvantaged families. What specific initiatives would you put in place to ensure that each student in Wareham Public Schools feels a sense of belonging? How do you believe that sense of belonging impacts the quality of teaching and learning?
I think belonging is critical. I think every student needs to feel like, my, when I was in the classroom, my goal was to let every student feel like they were my favorite student. You know, they all should feel like they are connected in that classroom. I think with, when I was at the middle school, you know, the PBIS program is a great program to get kids connected into the school and support them for the work that they're doing. That's just a fantastic approach. Finding what programs, sometimes it's, it's not like what you're doing during the day, it's the after-school programs, and that can change depending on your, your student interests. I think the, a lot of students can feel connected by the programs that are available to them outside the school day. I had mentioned before, you know, it's hard to draw students to come to school every day for, no offense to our math staff, but like math classroom, they usually have a draw. And then we're able to, or fortunate to be able to, to hit the content areas with our students. So, being able to provide a, a club or an activity that's connecting to all our students, I think gives them that sense of belonging. I think your, your staff, if you're able, I, I'm seeing it because it's so hard to find teachers as they're applying. But if you can find teachers that have similar, similar teachers of color, and they have a connection with a staff member, I think that's, that's been great. I've gone to diversity fairs and different things, career fairs, to bring that to Plymouth, and there's, there's not a lot of applicants to begin with for teaching across the board, and that puts another layer of, of challenge. So if you can have some type of in-house program, that's why I was so encouraged to see the early childhood program developing. If we can tap into our current students and find that pathway, maybe we can find other opportunities for those students to go into a career in education and then come back into the Wareham schools. So I think there's, there's different things, after-school, the during-school programs, that you can target all of the students that you have.
Thank you.
Who has been a strong mentor?
Who has been a strong mentor in your life, and what are the lessons you've learned from this individual?
You know, I've been fortunate. When I first got into education, I was paired up with the teacher that was right next door to me. And he helped guide me, you know, because coming out of college, I was a sports medicine major. I took my first position, I was in a new area, and I hadn't, didn't know if I wanted to get in education. So I was like, well, I'm the athletic trainer for the school, and the principal's asking me if I would be interested in substitute teaching. And then after I experienced that, he asked me if I would be interested in teaching biology. And then I was connected to my first mentor in education. And he showed me those life lessons that I still take with me today. He was in my wedding. He is somebody I just recently spent time with, and this is over thirty years of, of a relationship. The biggest lesson that he had taught me, and I maintain today, is that as long as you keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's the students, you're going to be okay. And I, I've kind of lived by that. The decisions that are made, whether you're a high school principal, or you're superintendent, your focus needs to be on what's going to be the ultimate benefit for the students under your watch. And if you are taking the time to hear from those that are connected to the students at the different levels, then I feel like you're going to have that opportunity to make significant change. When I first got to here in Massachusetts, I was fortunate enough to get another mentor who then helped guide me in, in the ways of, of Massachusetts, which is very different than, than other parts of the country that I was at. I look forward to having mentors, again, I've been in education thirty-two years, and I could still use mentors. I think it's, you learn from each other. So it's, it's a, and I hope some people feel that I've been a mentor to them. I've taken principals and helped them as they're navigating first-time events in their, in their, in their schools, in their career, so I think it's one of those things you hopefully are giving back as well as you're trying to receive.
Thank you.
Okay, round three. Please describe two changes you have made to your current or prior districts that have had a demonstrable and positive impact on the quality of the educational environment. How has it improved teaching and learning? And what metrics can be attributed to directly measure the success of your labors?
So this kind of brings me more back to the collective bargaining, you know, within my, my role. You know, we're, we're trying to create a document at the table that make everybody walk away from that, that negotiation feeling good, feeling like they're being rewarded, feeling like they're being appreciated for the work that they're doing. We wish we could write that open checkbook, I'll go back to Kevin's, you know. If we had the opportunity to do that, that would, that would help things immensely. But I think if staff, and I, and I've seen that, I feel like if staff feel like they're, they're being respected and, and taken care of, they're going to, they're going to make those improvements in the classroom and work harder because they want to, they want to, they want to be successful. So I think during that collective bargaining process has had that impact. I can also share that there's, we had one situation in the collective bargaining group where the staff in one of our groups did not feel respected. And we're working today to try and resolve that. So they do understand that we do have a lot of respect and value for the work that they're doing in the school system. And we've recognized that we need to make amends, or make a, put more attention to it so that we can find that.
Just, just so I understand, when you went into collective bargaining, I don't know whether it was the first time you were at, were, had that role at Plymouth, or the third time, did you at some point have a specific change in your approach to it?
So the first time, my eyes were wide open, because the first year I came here was in COVID, and that was also the same year that we were working on the collective bargaining agreement. So, that had a very different look than the second time I went through it. So the second time I went through it, it was more, I understood the contract language better. I knew what the requests were on the other side, I knew what the requests were on our side. And we had to kind of merge the two so that we had a, a collective bargaining agreement. And we wanted to make it so that our staff is at the table, when we left the table, that they felt good about it in the classroom, and they were going to work as hard as they wanted to work. So it was probably the second time around.
So it wasn't so much you had a different approach, because there are lots of books about how to go into collective bargaining. It's, you went into it almost with a more empathetic approach because you thought that would, in the long run, be in the best interests of the overall educational environment. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is, is that a fair statement?
I think in the second round, I took the approach to understand where they were for the last fifteen years in collective bargaining. And that's where it really, for, for us, I was talking about a salary correction we made. For fifteen years prior, I think the average was like one-point-three percent COLA change in the contract from year to year. And we can blame that on a variety of different things. I wasn't a part of those conversations, but I used that information knowing what they were looking for moving forward in their contract. We had to sell this to our town because ultimately we were going to need funding to make this happen. We had to explain and show why, as, as administration, why we were taking that approach. We knew why the teachers were asking for that approach. We wanted to demonstrate to the town why we were making our approach. And I think by sharing the data and the historical trends, we were able to get what, closer to what we wanted. We still had to make some reductions, but not to the extent that we would have had to have if we had a service level.
I guess what I was getting at, and I appreciate what you're saying, though. I guess what I was getting at is some specific change in the way you led, managed some area of the educational environment that had a demonstrable positive impact.
I, I guess I would have to say the relationship I had with the people. You know, when you first come into a system, you have to, you have to build relation, and it doesn't happen immediately. You have to get to know people, you have to dig down, you, you're going to be fighting alongside the staff. You have to get to know them, you have to know what, what kind of drives people. So, what was different, the biggest change, was I feel like the relationship I built between the collective bargaining group, like agreements, helped move forward our, our negotiations. I think that is critical when you're sitting at the table. You have to know, and it takes time. And sometimes you have a little bit more time than others, depending on when things are up. And people have to, trust is a big issue, is a big thing, and people have to understand that you're going to do what you say you're going to do. You can't just throw it out there and hope it sticks to the wall. You want to, if you're going to make a commitment, you want to be able to follow through with it, so. I guess it's the best way I can answer your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger?
What is your experience with and position on veterans-to-teachers programs? And how do you cultivate a strong staff with diverse resumes and experiences to help broaden the worldview of our students?
You know, when I was in, in Georgia, I was dealt with the hand that a lot of our, our graduates were satisfied with that being the, the highest educational degree that they were going to earn, was be a high school graduate. And we were really working on trying to get students outs, we want, I wanted to push them out and experience the world, to be a part of something outside of what their comfort zone was, in hopes that they would go out, learn, and then come back and share what they've learned with, with this, you know, the community, and maybe get back involved that way. So, I was really big on trying to get students to, to go out and, and see the world. I think with, with the military, the veterans' teaching program, I haven't done a specific one. We have used veterans through different avenues, through our, like ROTC program I had in Florida. We had veterans constantly there. We had a huge veteran ceremony that we would do in both Florida and Georgia, in making those connections and having veterans come in and be guest speakers to classrooms and to the, into the history classes, and share their experiences and, and talk to students. So I've, I've done those types of things. I've worked closely with the ROTC. I was thrilled to see that there was an ROTC program here in Wareham. I wanted to get one started up when I went to Georgia, and the waitlist was extremely long, and I just couldn't, couldn't make it happen. And then there's not one in Plymouth as well, so I was grateful to see that. I would hope that there's a, a connection to the veterans here in Wareham that, that are either supporting the school, being a part of the school, so I welcome that opportunity.
How about, how do you cultivate a strong staff with diverse resumes and experiences to help broaden the worldview of the students?
Well, this almost goes back to that question that, I think it was April I was asking, about the diversity of applicants and belonging and trying to make those connections. When we are looking to fill spots, we are using different avenues. I use Teachers Lounge, for example, which is a, a pathway for teachers of color to go to one site to see jobs that are open. So I use that to, to do postings. And then by that, hopefully, that's connecting them to the school spring, which is what we use to advertise for jobs. Trying to find that outreach where, where staff can come in into a diverse workforce, I, I open arms to it. Sometimes you have to maybe look back and try and figure out how you can develop a, a program within. If we have, as I mentioned, you know, high school students that are going on that might want to return into education, or paraeducators, there's programs available through Bridgewater that, that helps support the funding of, of a degree to, to bring in candidates into the school. So, I worry about available candidates across the board, not just in diverse backgrounds, just because the total numbers are declining. I was pulling data, I met with a diversity committee in Plymouth, and they wanted to know more about the number of applicants that we were having. And, you know, we don't have a way to disseminate minority or diverse candidates, but I was looking at the numbers, and twelve, fifteen years ago, there was almost four hundred people applying for an elementary opening. Most recently, this past year, we would have maybe thirty-five or forty candidates. And of those thirty-five, forty candidates, and the principals in Wareham could probably attest to this, half of them aren't even certified. We have a job opening right now, we have one candidate, and they don't even have a bachelor's degree, and I'm trying to fill a teaching spot. So it's, it's hard right now, getting people in the educational field. I sometimes feel like that's, you know, there were, as an educator, you know, you work in the hundred-and-eighty days. They had some, some built-in perks that people would, would lap, you know, gravitate to, you know, especially if you're having a family at home. You have the holidays off, you have the school breaks off, you have the summer breaks, it kind of works in that family. But a lot of these businesses are having those same opportunities for staff. And I think young people are, are gravitating towards that. They, they can work from home, they can be virtual most of the time, they have Fridays off, they have, you know, comp time. They have a lot of advantages, so it's not just the, the diverse resumes that I'm concerned about, it's just resumes in general. So I think that's where we have to, like, build within your own capacity to try and keep the education going.
Seth, Roger?
Yep.
Joyce?
As you know, we have one school at each level, elementary, middle, and high, in addition to a cooperative school that includes a night school. When developing your budget, how would you ensure that financial resources, which are always shrinking, are distributed equitably at each level? How would you communicate this to administration and staff at each building? And what practices would you put into place to ensure that the school buildings are all striving to meet the same district goals?
So, there's going to be a lot of conversation, you know, there's going to be a lot of review, you know, our student, teacher ratio, again, that's a, a huge part of the budget is staffing. One of the things I'll share at the end is just some of my noticings when I was here, just based on conversations, and there is different needs at each level that the administration and the staff that I spoke to feel like this is what we need. But it's budgetary, so you have to find it somewhere. So, hypothetical, we have eighteen kids in kindergarten. I don't know if that's the right number, but we'll say it's eighteen. They have one paraeducator for all nine classrooms, shared. They need more help down there. But at what, at what consequence? Do we go to eight classrooms and have twenty kids in a classroom? But then use that extra funding to support, you know, hiring part-time paraeducators so that there's one in every kindergarten classroom? Is that a, is that a trade-off? I'm not going to make that decision without having conversations with the building administration and the kindergarten teachers, if that's a direction that we felt like we needed to go. Talking into middle school, looking at a science curriculum. You know, what does it take to get a, a healthy science curriculum in? Is there something that we have to look at trading off? Because if you had a deficit last year and we're anticipating a deficit again this year, we have to find the funds somewhere. Maybe it's through grants, maybe it's through another service that we're, maybe don't feel like we need to. like we need to continue to spend money on. So I think having conversations, listening, I think is going to be important, to see what the needs are at the different levels, and then try to make a decision that is least disruptive to the district, but also provide a huge level of support. If we can get more support at the kindergarten level, maybe we're attacking early literacy in a different approach, because we're not having just one person in the classroom trying to manage everything. They have some extra support. So that would be maybe, you know, the tactic I would take.
Okay. Thank you.
April?
Aside from the experience you've already described to us in your interview to this point, what do you feel is the biggest hurdle you faced as an administrator? How did you handle it? What is something you think you did well in that situation? And what is something you learned from it that you would change moving forward if and when you encounter a similar situation in our district?
So the biggest hurdle I've had in my career has always been the first time, you know, first-time high school principal. That was a new experience. I had to do a lot of learning. And, you know, I did that for 13 years in one school system and four years in another. Coming to Plymouth was a hurdle. I had to understand and learn about the side of the school system that I was being charged with, that I hadn't experienced before. I think that's part of who, you know, as you're growing, you're trying to establish who you are, but you have to understand and you have to learn, and you have to know that this is new to you. Coming to Wareham, it would be the same thing. I have not been a superintendent before. I would have to learn from the areas. I have to rely on those that are here in the district. I can't be the expert at everything. I have to know everything that's going on. I have to drive instruction. I have to support our schools. But I'm going to rely on those that are here. I'm going to have to rely on those that come into here. I'm going to have to rely on the direction of the school committee. I'm going to be working with the daily operations of running a school, but that's going to be new. And I'm fully committed to being a part of that process and learning and being the, as part of your mission, the best version of myself in learning how to make that happen. You can't do it alone, and everything is going to be new for the first time. So I've had to do that, and I feel like I've had success doing that. And my hope is to bring that same level of commitment into this role.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll say it, April.
So our community survey, conducted by MASC, received hundreds of responses and indicated that the number-one quality our stakeholders want in our next superintendent is honesty and transparency in decision-making. Why do you believe that's important in educational leadership? And then how would you do, what would you do in your first six months to build credibility with teachers, families, students, and civic leaders?
Okay, that's a perfect segue into this. I'll speak when I come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One person, also branch assistants.
Oh, wow, you learned quick.
So trust. I mean, I would hope that's what I would have seen. When I tried getting onto the, I wasn't going to take the survey, but I wanted to see what the questions were, and I was hoping the results were going to be posted. I just never found them. But I would hope that honesty was one of them. I might not be able to answer every answer correctly the way you want. I couldn't answer Jeff's question about early literacy, but I was honest about my answer. And my goal is to find and support the students here by listening and understanding the best that I can. So honesty, I think, and transparency in decision-making is critical. I think communication is going to be a piece of that. I think stakeholder input is obviously extremely important, not just within the school walls, but outside in the community and the families, before decisions are made. I'm not going to make a decision because I had this thought over the weekend and I want to implement it on Monday. That doesn't happen. You know, I know sometimes people want change to happen quickly, but it takes time. And to do it right, you're going to have to put the work in so that you can have, you want the change to be successful, so you have to make sure you have the buy-in and the support of those you're asking to do change. So during my time here, there was a few things that I've already kind of targeted. In the plan you have in front of you, a lot of it talks about communication, listening, being a part of the community, and how you want to make those changes. And I think that type of plan would be shared with the community. I want to invite the community to be a part of these conversations, so we can address the things that we want to address. I enjoyed the visits that I had at each of the levels, walked away with different things that I noticed. You know, we do a lot of learning walks, and we talk about the noticings and the wonderings because, you know, you're only in there for a small bit. You know, teachers, I walk into a room for 15 minutes, I'm not in there the whole time. It's just a piece of what's happening. I was walking by a high school classroom and I just stopped. I was so, I was getting caught up, and I could hear the teacher through the doorway. She obviously was very passionate about this passage she was reading, and I just wanted to, I wanted to go in and sit down and be a part of the classroom. The kids were just like in awe, just, you know, just watching what was happening. The principal was saying, like, oh, it's always like that in there. There's good things happening. Being a part of that is what's appealing, and I think having that honest approach and the transparency, you're probably not going to like every decision that's made. I get that. But the decisions that are being made are going to be what we feel is in the best interest of students. And I have had my career guiding that. I put in there at the end that, you know, if a student wants to be successful, there's a lot of work that goes into that. But the first thing they have to do is they have to be present. They have to attend. Parents have to get the kids to school. Sounds like the attendance rate is good. We have 95, 96% attendance rate is what the principals were communicating. That's a good percentage. Why is the graduation rate low? You know, those are the things you got to dig deeper into. And that's what I hope to do during the process, as you get to learn the school system, and hopefully that that plan that's in front of you helps guide the decisions, that helps make the superintendent's goals, that helps make, drives the strategic plan, so that we have 900 kids at the high school and you have, you know, 95% or higher graduation rate. That's the end goal.
Kevin?
Thank you.
We're fortunate. We have a few minutes left.
Uh huh.
I'd like to follow up on one of your responses to Roger's question.
Okay.
We've heard from a number of, I've heard from a number of sources over the years that we're just not getting the number of applicants that we used to get.
Yeah.
And they're not particularly qualified frequently when you get the application. What do you think are the one or two reasons why the applicant pool has shrunk so badly?
I think there are challenges in education, and I think maybe some candidates, like my daughter, I thought would have been a perfect educator. She's been in an educational household, she's involved athletics. I was like, okay, she's going to do it. But she just watched the difficulties that she saw from her lens of her classmates, and she's like, I don't know if I can commit to something like that. And then she's walking into a job, making more money in an area that I wish she would do something different, because she's just doing tasks that have her sitting on a computer at home virtually and not out in the real world. So I think, the real world. I think the opportunities that our young graduates have don't align with the work that goes into education. It's hard work. You have to be committed. You have to have that internal, like, drive to do that. So I don't know if the availability of other types of positions that lend itself not to have to do the grind of educating students and having 25 kids in your classroom, or whatever the number is, 20 here, if that is a deterrent, because they're seeing opportunities in other areas. Education is, you talked about it, it's in the news, it's less funding, it's, you know, there's a lot of concerns in education. Is that a pathway that people are wanting to jump down? I think once people get into it, I think is an opportunity. We're trying to promote it through substitute teaching. You know, I saw you guys had some openings as well, trying to get people to kind of step your foot in. I didn't go to school to be an educator. I found my passion for it when I started substitute teaching. And I was like, okay, maybe this is my career. I wanted to be the athletic trainer for the Boston Red Sox. I didn't realize that wasn't, you know, that wasn't going to happen. So I got into education, and then I haven't looked back. So maybe trying to find opportunities for people to come in and see what it would be like, but there are definitely challenges doing. And I don't think it's unique to here. It's the same in the South, it's the same out West. And we're just, we're trying to find those that are interested and get them in and keep them in, keeping them in. That's the game.
Thank you. Anybody else have any follow-ups to their questions, or to other people's questions, for that matter?
No.
All good?
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Does he have a closing statement?
Do you have a short closing statement you'd like to make?
Well...
It's entirely up to you.
No, no. I was able to handle that.
He speaks to it?
Yeah. Yeah, that handled, when Kevin asked that last question, that was an opportunity for me to insert that into your hands. That's what, I put that together last night and this morning. And so that's the level of commitment that you would get from me if given the opportunity.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take a 15-minute recess.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Welcome again, Amy.
Thank you so much.
So ladies and gentlemen, this is the third and final interview for the evening. We are resuming after approximately a 15-minute recess. It's about 7:14, and we are very pleased to have Amy Hartley-Madison, who is currently the Assistant Superintendent of Schools at Randolph Public Schools. The format, Amy, will be approximately an hour and 15 minutes. Each of the school committee members will have three questions for you. They may or may not have follow-up questions, depending on your responses. And we'd be very happy if you had a short opening statement, if you like, entirely up to you.
Okay. Wonderful. Right now?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent, excellent. So, good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me back yet again. I did have a wonderful day today in Wareham Public Schools. I really very much enjoyed my time. I'm feeling very connected to students, staff, leaders, and even some community members. It was so nice to see at the community forum. So I'm excited for your questions this evening, ready to continue to be my authentic leader self, and interested to partake in the interview.
Excellent. So I have the privilege of being the first question.
Great.
Public education is under attack from a variety of sources, whether it's advocates for issuing vouchers, parents of minority children who believe segregated schools deny equal resources and impact achievement, culturally conservative citizens who believe teaching and curriculum is slanted to the left, or taxpayers who advocate against rising property taxes. There is no longer a nationwide consensus or trust in the integrity of public education. What would you do to change this perception in Wareham and reduce the number of parents who send their children outside our public school system?
This has been a theme since my initial application, I think, to the district. I started looking into what's happening in Wareham, and I definitely saw the trend of the declining enrollment, watching school committee meetings, hearing you all being very concerned about it, and then spending the day in Wareham today and talking to folks about what's going on. I'm thinking about several approaches that I think need to happen. One for sure is increasing communication and community awareness about the school district. I have noticed, and I've said this before, I'm a neighbor to Wareham. I live in Rochester and was so surprised and really very excited to hear about so many of the things happening in the district, in the schools, that I was unaware of. And so I'm thinking about how we can do a better job, really telling the story of Wareham Public Schools, what's really happening, all of the amazing things the teachers and students are doing in the schools. So number one, I think that it is definitely telling the story and advertising the school district, and really telling about all the things happening. The second thing I'm thinking about is how academically we can really compete and offer our students things that incite their passion, and also offer them pathways that maybe aren't available at some of our competitors, where our students may be leaving us to go attend. In the district that I'm currently in, we've made very intentional efforts to offer pathways in our middle and high school level that are showing early evidence of retaining students in our district. They're entering into computer science pathways and biomedical engineering, biomedical pathways, and that's showing some evidence that we're keeping students in our district that way. So I think our leadership team getting together and looking at being very intentional in the courses and pathways we're offering would be something that I think would support that as well, and would help the perception and reduce the number of students that might be exiting our district. And thirdly, I think working on what's already definitely existing in the district, which is pride, Wareham pride, Viking pride. I've said this a number of times over the last week and a half, but I'm a firm believer in putting children's feet where you want them to go. So I think the soonest that we put our youngest Vikings' feet in the middle and high school, seeing amazing things, or even vice versa, getting our, today at Wareham Elementary School, I saw this amazing AV room that's set up and ready to go to do such cool things that they're not yet utilizing, and they want to utilize, and they're excited to utilize. It's all there, the equipment is top-notch. And then at the high school, I met ISIS and saw that Wareham Media has a beautiful connection there. And so there's an opportunity to get the high school students that are active in the media club to the elementary school and make connections, and get that AV studio up and running. And then the elementary students are meeting high school students, they're seeing pathways, they're seeing opportunities, they're going home and they're talking about these amazing interactions they're having with Wareham High School students. So the earlier and the more often that we can connect our district across the K-12, K-12-plus, today Joyce introduced me to one of our older students that's doing sort of an internship work-study program in the elementary school cafeteria. Again, it's bridging the gap and connecting folks across our district. So I think we need to do more of that and do it more intentionally, and that will support the perception in the community as well as keep students in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger?
What is your experience with the collective bargaining process? And how have you put into practice the balancing of retaining talent, talented, experienced educators, while also attracting and improving the livelihood of younger teachers? How would you strive to accomplish this balance in Wareham without needing talent meeting to make up for potential shortfalls?
it's one of opportunity, it's one of challenge, and it's very much based in relationship. And so in the district I currently work in, I have spent a lot of time and energy creating relationships with the teachers' union, and that has really created some excellent dialogue. It has supported us working through, at the bargaining table and outside of the bargaining table... table, working through pushing really important initiatives in the district. One that comes to mind is, we identified five central instructional practices that we wanted to live in every classroom in the district. And so the teachers' union had questions, they had reservations, they had concern. We met about it, and we discussed it. And I very strongly advocated that our classrooms need to have these five core instructional practices. It took time together to work through it, and now we call it the Focus Five. And that's alive in our district, and every classroom understands that there's five core practices that need to be alive. But that came really from relationship building and mutual respect and taking time. Doing, taking time and working in that relationship outside of collective bargaining has helped us at the bargaining table. There's mutual respect and there's trust. And I think that's really important. The second part of your question about retaining talented inexperienced educators and attracting younger teachers, I think what I'm hearing about Wareham is that a lot of teachers are here and they're committed and they're staying here. And that's, that's really wonderful. That's important data. That's another thing that we should be telling the community, because that says something about the Wareham Public Schools. So I think, I feel like this is a place that educators really like to work. It's what I'm hearing from, from the community in my short visit. And I think that we also need to be thinking about how we mentor new teachers, how new educators enter our district, what kind of things we do to support them. We know that a lot of teachers leave the profession in the first three years. And so Ms. Wixton shared with me some of the ways that we support teachers in Wareham. New Educator is a skillful teacher course, which is amazing and wonderful. But I think thinking about, we do need to think about how competitive our wages are in a responsible way that is fair to the town, but that's something that's important to attract new talent. We think, need to think about how we support our teachers, and then the relationships and connections to our town and our district that's, that teachers have. Because that's why teachers stay. Everybody wants fair wages and to be paid well, but mostly people want to feel a sense of belonging and connected to their work. And so that's what we need to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Joyce?
Could you describe the most significant?
The most significant public relations crisis you've managed that involved high levels of media scrutiny and community outrage. Detail your three-part communication plan for staff, parents, and the media, and what you did to actively rebuild trust within the community afterward.
The one that comes to mind was really, really difficult. So I mentioned to the committee that we opened a new school when I was a principal and a leader. In order to do that, similar to Wareham, we built on a, on a current school site. So we actually had to move our school for a year so they could build the school. When we did that, we moved into an older school building that was closed down. So I spent the summer there with my children. My youngest was crawling around the school on her hands and knees, preparing the school. We, we all did. The entire staff was there the entire summer, blood, sweat, and tears, getting this old building ready. Just before we opened the doors and welcomed the children for one year of sort of, you know, distance, we, we was, it was, we made it really fun. But just before we opened the doors, some parents requested air quality testing, because it was an old building and it was closed up for many years before we opened it. When we tested the air quality, there was mold in the air. So, I got that call at 9:30 at night, the day before we were doing an open house for families. And, and I can't remember now, maybe three or four days before school was to start. So, not only are you thinking about all of the children in the community that you're about to welcome into school, in addition, I had my own children in the building for the entire summer, as I said, crawling around on hands and knees. And my staff members were there, and they had their children there. So, very difficult situation. So, three-part communication. The very first thing I did, and this goes to trust and relationships, I was a single principal with no assistant principal, but I had a leadership team at my school I had built. The first thing I did was called my leadership team. We had an emergency meeting at 10:00 PM at one of the teachers' houses. We all drove there, and we sat around the kitchen table, and we came up with a plan. And that's what it's like in a small district. We didn't have a communications person to call. You know, so we sat around the table and we talked about what we're going to do about this. And so I do think, in the time of a crisis, leaning on the core leadership team of your district that you have hopefully built, that you can trust, that care deeply about the district, that's important. So that was the first thing we did. The next day, we had an emergency leadership team of the district leadership, and we came up with a plan to hold off the opening of school, which is very inconvenient for the entire community, and it's costly, to communicate very transparently what we knew, when we knew it, and what we did about it. And that's really important. I've sort of taken that lesson from that instance. Like, anytime I learn about something that seems really important, I always think, what did I know? When did I know it? And what did I do about it? And so, as soon as we knew, we stopped allowing anyone in the building. We got very serious air quality experts into the district. We communicated transparently about what we learned and what the truth was, and we came up with a plan. I was very fortunate. I had been the principal of the school for five years, so I had a lot of trust with the community. The community knew I was there the entire summer. So there was not a sense that we were trying to trick or endanger anyone, but yet we, we would have endangered folks. So there was a sense of rebuilding trust. There was outrage. There was very upset people. So we had to have experts in, we had to share transparently the data that we received. And still, there were people that were really upset. So it took a lot of conversations. And I think the built-in trust that I had before the crisis really supported, and others had in the, in the school, really supported us working through that issue. But there were press conferences and media involved, and it took a lot of many, many conversations and transparency.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
What are your thoughts on the evaluative process of the superintendent, and how should your annual evaluation be integrated into the strategies and action plans you put into place to move the district forward? And please be as specific as possible. How would you respond if your evaluation wasn't strong and reflected a need for significant changes? And would legal action ever be a recourse you'd take against the school committee? And how, in your estimation, does this play into the process of strategic planning for the district on a multi-year basis?
That's a big question, April. Okay, I'm going to take it bit by bit.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, in general, my thoughts on evaluation, not just superintendent evaluation, but all evaluation, is that evaluation is about growth. It's about transparency, kind of hopping down to the bottom part of your question around the need for improvement. My practice around evaluation, and even anytime I have been evaluated, has always been, evaluation and feedback shouldn't be a surprise. So I feel like if I'm not satisfied with the growth or progress of someone that I am evaluating, giving them that feedback regularly, we don't want to surprise people. That's not a way to help people grow. So that's my practice in evaluation, is understanding where people want to grow, supporting them in their growth, and if I'm not seeing the growth, communicating that regularly and without surprise. In terms of the evaluation process of the superintendent, I feel like a strong strategic plan should guide the district and the superintendent's goals. I would expect that my evaluation would be aligned very strategically to our plan in the district and the direction that we're moving in. For example, in the district that I'm working in right now, we are very specifically moving towards 80% of our students being on or above grade level and reading by 2027. So I would expect that I, as the Assistant Superintendent, would be evaluated, or the superintendent of the district, would be evaluated very specifically on the data around reaching those goals. And of course, in a strategic plan, that includes very specific goals and action plans. So I would see that tied directly to my evaluation process. I welcome feedback. I, I love feedback. And so I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of receiving an evaluation that's not positive, because I haven't experienced that. But I have experienced feedback. And so I would expect that if I had a relationship with a school committee and received feedback that wasn't strong, that I would be reflective, and that I would, I would be very connected to the community and very committed to improvement, both my own and the district's. So I would expect that I would roll up my sleeves and work harder. It's hard to imagine that. But I can, that's how I would expect myself. It's how I respond to feedback in general in life. I get a lot of feedback from my kids. So, and how does this play? Oh, and then you added something in there about legal action. I can't imagine ever being in a situation where I would take legal action due to feedback I received on my performance. That would be a very sad spot to be in as a professional, my side of the table and yours. So that's a position I would never have myself in. Thank you. Would you want me to answer the very last part? I don't think I did. Does this play into this process of, oh, I guess I did that in the beginning?
You did, you kind of integrated that in there, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you didn't have to worry about the budget, or about the school committee, teachers' unions, or public opinion, what one initiative would you champion here at Wareham to improve student achievement? And what research or data would you have used to come to that decision? And then how would you implement a layered strategy to ensure a smooth outcome? And how do you measure its success?
So I'm going to answer this question with a lot of heart and passion, but I want to couch it with the fact that I would need more time in here, in Wareham, to look at data and to see practice. I've been in five classrooms in the district. And so, but for me, if I was going to have to pick one initiative and I had all the money and the freedom in the world, it would be literacy. I think there's nothing more important we can do for our kids than have them all be literate lovers of literacy and reading and thinking and writing. And it definitely takes funds to do that work. It takes strategic planning. The research or data I would use to come to that decision would be digging into your data even further than I have. I'd want to see the assessments that are happening at the school level and triangulate that data. I have the research side already on the science of reading and what it takes to have students be strong readers. Now I need to see if that's happening in Wareham classrooms, and how much of it's happening. So those would be my questions. A layered strategy to ensure a smooth outcome, I do think that buy-in and urgency is critical. One of the ways we made these changes in Randolph was going slow to go fast. And so we built urgency with, with our staff members by collecting data and sharing that data very vulnerably and transparently, and having the teachers get a little fired up about it. And, and sort of upset that they didn't know what they didn't know. And, and we were all vulnerable, that, that we were all learning about how to teach reading, and that all of our practices, even my own when I was a third-grade teacher, were not aligned, aligned to the science of reading. So I think in terms of a strategy, it would be urgency and buy-in first. And then it would be building the capacity of our educators, minus resources, minus programs, just build the capacity of our educators so they know how to be strong teachers of reading. With any materials in your hands, if you know the process it takes students to, to learn to read, you can teach them to read. You don't need any special materials. You need the capacity and the knowledge to know how to do it. So that's the next step I would do. And then I would want to, once our teachers knew what to do, I would want to resource them with really good materials, so that they didn't have to spend time and energy finding things and finding materials. I want to give them that. And then I think, I haven't heard about instructional coaches in Wareham Public Schools. That has been a huge lever for us in our, in the district I'm currently in, in terms of supporting teachers' growth, having instructional coaches in the classroom. This is, this is a dynamic science, teaching children to read. And you can't take a course and then be an expert at it. You have to continuously grow in it. And so having instructional coaches that are experts in that, and be, having them in classrooms, side-by-side, modeling and co-teaching with teachers, has been a way that we have truly moved our practice in the district. So those are, I would say those are the beginning steps that I would use to strategically move the district around literacy. And to measure our success, we would constantly be progress monitoring students. So in the district that I'm in, we had a baseline of 35% of our students were on or above grade level. And then we set very high expectation goals, that we want 80% of our children there. And we've met our incremental goals every year, taking small bites at that chunk, being realistic, but really leaning into supporting educators. Because it's not enough to just set goals. You have to then support that in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Round two.
Okay.
MCAS scores in Massachusetts, including Wareham, have been in decline for many years. The latest national assessment of educational progress, meaning the national for the whole country, scores for literacy comprehension have literally never been lower. And yet to one, yet no one seems to know what to do about it. And no one in educate, in the educational communities has stepped forward to accept responsibility. Who or what do you think is responsible for the decline? And what will you do to bring some degree of accountability to Wareham Public Schools?
Well, that's a very important question. I don't think it's all of the responsibility, but I do think a piece of, and I don't know if it's responsibility, but I will own that I was a dedicated teacher in New Bedford, loved kids, worked really hard, read things, studied things, continuously growing, getting the next degree all the time. And I didn't know how to teach kids to read. I didn't learn it in higher education. I didn't know. I did it wrong. So there's a piece of, we don't know what we don't know. It's hard to say that now, because at this point now, that was in 1999, 2000, 2001, at this point now, we do know. We, we know, and we knew then, but I don't think many people did. It was kind of secret. But now, the science of reading is hot. It's a hot topic. So I think now, folks know. And so what's next?
Excuse me for interrupting.
Yes.
Twenty-five years ago, they didn't know, but we still had good, good scores. What's changed that has caused the scores, from your perspective, to plummet?
Hmm. Well, a couple things I think about that. One is that I do think that students are more dimensional now. We have needs in our schools that are extreme and different than we probably had 25, 30, 40 years ago. In terms of reading and reading comprehension, it's important to understand that there's, there's two parts of reading comprehension. There's language comprehension, and there's word recognition. And if both of those parts are not- And if both of those parts are not attended to, reading comprehension doesn't happen. So in terms of bringing accountability to Wareham Public Schools, I think there's a couple of steps. Number one is deeply looking at the data and triangulating the data. I'd want to see more than just MCAS scores. I'd want to see the data that's coming out of the classrooms. I know that you use NUIA here. And what else? I talked with the assistant principal at the Wareham Elementary School today, and it sounds like they have some diagnostic testing they use. We need to triangulate that, and then we need to look at student groups and see, is there any patterns or trends among student groups that are either doing better or having a decline in their data? Once we sort of understand the data, I think we need to get into classrooms on the regular and see what's happening in classrooms. It's hard to make a conjecture about what is or is not happening in the district without being in classrooms and seeing practice. Anytime you're going to attack any area of teaching and learning, you always start with the tier-one instruction, the instruction that all students are getting. So we need to start there and look at what's happening for all students in literacy instruction. And not just at the elementary school. I'd want to look at the middle school and the high school as well. Now, once we look at tier-one instruction, then we need to look at how we're supporting intervention and how we're collecting data, adjusting instruction, measuring progress regularly around both the word recognition and the language comprehension, so around both areas. I heard today at the elementary school that there's some questions around the reading program that they're using. So I'd want to understand a lot more about what's happening in classrooms, in the reading block, in the literacy block, around specifically word recognition and language comprehension. What kind of vocabulary instruction are we using? What kind of building of background knowledge is happening in our classrooms? Because those are all critical parts of reading comprehension and language comprehension.
Excuse my ignorance, but what did you mean by students are more dimensional?
The needs. I think student need. We have more dimensional needs in our schools around mental health, social emotional behaviors that I think are impacting teachers' ability to move all students.
Thank you. All set. Roger?
Safety in schools continues to be a critical issue for students, staff, and their families. How would you assess the current safety initiatives and protocols in Wareham Public Schools? How often would you reevaluate safety procedures? And who would you involve in those conversations? And what would be your course of action if, God forbid, there were a safety emergency?
Well, I think to assess the current safety initiatives and protocols in Wareham Public Schools, I'd start by talking to the school leaders and ask a lot of questions about what kind of training takes place, how often does it take place? What is the philosophy or training protocol we use in the district? And then some specifics, like where's the safety meetup spot for each school? And is that known? Have you practiced going there so that your brand-new teacher, staff member knows how to get to that spot? Have you practiced with the whole school so you can see if it actually works? These are some of the things that I've done in the district that I've been in. In terms of reevaluating safety processes, I think it's super important to have safety experts in the town be part of those conversations, as well as school and district leaders. So I would want the police and the fire EMS in town to all be at the table. And I'd want them to be at our practice protocols so that they can give feedback to us. They're going to be very important partners in the event that we do have a crisis at one of our schools. So they need to be in the, in the planning stages and also in the reflection stages. So when we do practice, it's really important that we then sit around a table and reflect on that, tabletop exercises, so that, we can do that with an actual crisis, but I prefer to do it with a practice. So that, but either way, I think it's an important practice to sit and talk through an incident that occurred and what went well, and what do we need to change next time, and then to institute those changes in our protocols and doing that regularly. Number one, it creates really good communication, trust, and relationship with very important partners in our town. And also, it helps us to be prepared. Being sure that every member of our school community is aware of our protocols at the right developmental stage and knows what to do and feels empowered to react and take, take the proper steps to keep our, our students and our staff safe. Thanks.
The level of special education students in Wareham is well above the state average. Could you please tell us about your experience working with this population of students? And also tell us about two special education initiatives that you've put into place? And if you were successful, and how did you measure that success?
So I certainly have experience as a classroom teacher, a school principal, and now as an assistant superintendent working with special education programs in our district. I can think of two different initiatives that I could share. The first would be high-quality instructional materials and on-grade-level instruction in our sub-separate programming. It's something that we're sort of working through even now in our district, knowing that it's critical for every student to receive on-grade-level instruction and have access to the same high-quality instructional materials that all students in the school have. And also recognizing that there are developmental learning progressions that are critical. And so there is, I was actually talking with Sarah, maybe Green, earlier at the community forum, a special education teacher here in the district. And we were talking about this very thing, wanting to be sure, ensure that students receive instruction at the standard. But also understanding that we have to change the access points for students so that they can still meet the same grade-level standard. And that takes some professional development, professional learning for our educators and time, too, to really work through, this is the grade-level standard, this is my high-quality instructional material, and here's how I will find an access point for all of my students so that they can still reach the same standard as all students in that general education population. Another is thinking about how, and it's really sort of pre-special education, so pre-referral, but thinking about our multi-tiered system of support and how we support students who are struggling before they are put on an IEP. With a strong intervention plan in place, we have found in my current district that we can meet the needs and make progress with students before they are on an IEP. And that takes a lot of very good training and a very strategic understanding of data and how to respond to data and instructional practice. But that's something that is sort of pre-special education that we have found has kept students off of individual education plans and still getting all of the specialized instruction that they need. And we have an understanding in our schools that intervention is for everyone. So we might have an intervention group with students on an IEP and some not on an IEP because those are the students that need that particular intervention at that time. So we're meeting kids' needs, whether or not they are on an IEP, and we're finding that we can support students and see them grow, pre-referral.
Thank you.
Our district has a unique makeup of students, including a high level of diverse students, students with behavioral needs, and students from socio-economically disadvantaged families. What specific initiatives would you put in place to ensure that each student in Wareham Public Schools feels a sense of belonging? And how do you believe that sense of belonging impacts the quality of teaching and learning?
So it's, it's my strong belief that sense of belonging comes first and is paramount to learning. If we're going to have dynamic spaces where students learn and feel passionate and are inspired, that starts with a really strong sense of belonging. And so I think it's very important that our schools are intentional about building that sense of belonging. One, one thing that we've done in our district that is sort of in the background, but I think it's really important, is we're very intentional about our curriculum materials that are in our schools and classrooms, that they represent the students that are in our classrooms. So we want to provide windows, mirrors, and doors for our students. So we want them to look through windows and see possibilities they haven't seen before. We want them to open doors and move into new spaces, and we want them to look into mirrors and see themselves. And we want all of those things to be happening while they're learning. So we're intentional about the materials, the stories, the, even the pictures that are in front of our kids, the experiences that we, that we provide for them, whether inside the schoolhouse or out in the community, that those are providing windows, mirrors, and doors. And I think that that is, is really important commitment to creating sense of belonging. I think you need to be seen in your school. Another strategy we talked, I talked about earlier at the community forum today was being intentional about knowing which students aren't feeling that sense of belonging and doing some really strategic work around creating that. So relationship mapping, where you're looking at all the students in your school and you're very carefully monitoring which students have lots and lots of wonderful relationships with adults and which do not. And those are your students that aren't going to feel a sense of belonging. Sometimes we do all the right things, and there are still students that don't feel they belong in a space. And so we have to do something else. It's, it's just like the tiered instruction. There's tiered creating community and creating sense of belonging. So some tier-one moves to sense of belonging might be events in your school and having pride and having school colors and having rituals and routines in your school. But then there's students that still won't feel like they belong. And so when we relationship map, we find those students. And then we're very intentional about identifying the adults in our space and how they're going to connect to those students that don't currently have someone. So a couple of times a week, they're going to seek them out in the lunchroom or in the hallway and ask them how their practice was, how work was. And that's sort of setting up almost like a mentor program within your school to ensure that students whom all of the efforts we're making for all kids are still not feeling a sense of belonging, that we do something extra to create a sense of belonging for all students. So that's one strategy that I've seen really work.
Thank you.
I'm going to steal Rachel's follow-up time. Excuse me.
Who's Rachel?
Did I say Rachel? It's a long, it's a long day.
Ironically, that's the most common messed-up version of my name I get since like, high school. I've been called Rachel more times. I don't know where April and Rachel come from, but somehow it matches.
I have no idea where it came from. Sorry, April. Windows, mirrors, and doors. Where did that come from?
That comes from a culturally responsive, an expert in culturally responsive teaching.
So you didn't invent it?
No, absolutely not. That's a very known culturally responsive teaching sort of idea of what we should be offering to our students in learning spaces.
It's fascinating to me. How long has it been around?
Many years. A long time. Yeah.
I apologize for my
I wish I could quote the expert. I'm sorry that I can't, but I'll email you later.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, Kevin.
No problem. Who has been a strong mentor in your life, and what are the lessons you've learned from this individual?
Goodness, there's so many.
You could list a couple, too, if you want.
Okay. Professional, personal. All right. All right, I'm going to go for it. The first one that comes to mind is my mom. She, I was sharing with Joyce today, first-grade teacher in Rochester for many years, elementary school principal on the Cape, school committee member in her retirement. And she is someone who truly leads with love. She loves education, loves children. In fact, not to get too sappy on you, but gave me a heart to put in my pocket today to make sure I remember why I'm here. So for sure, I would say the biggest mentor in my life and a role model and someone who kind of keeps me grounded. We get, going back to your first question, Kevin, there's so many pulls at us in education, and you kind of spoke in it in one of your questions, too, Jeff. So you've got to have people in your life that are going to keep you grounded on why you're in this work and what you're really in it for, because it's easy to get distracted by the noise. So she's someone that does that for me.
Thank you.
Okay. Final round.
Okay.
Please describe two changes you have made to your current or prior districts that have had a demonstrable and positive impact on the quality of the educational environment. How has it improved teaching and learning? And what metrics can be attributed to directly measure the success of these labors?
I'm going to talk about some, some different things than, than literacy. So I want to share with you, one, I would say I would sort of speak to the instructional practices routine that we, that I talked about with Roger, that what we kind of coined as Focus Five. What we were noticing in our classrooms was that there was a lot of different things happening, and there was no pattern or trend around the best instructional practices that we know every classroom needs to have. And there's research about that. We know what needs to be happening in every classroom to have excellent learning spaces. And we couldn't find a pattern or trend of that happening in our district. And there's also a lot that we're asking of teachers. The teacher rubric alone is so many things to be a proficient teacher. And so we decided to identify for our teachers in our district five things that we wanted to see happening in every classroom. And three of them were based on research. So that's clear objectives, checking for understanding, and criteria for success. And those three things are based on research. If you have a strong learning space, you have those three things happening. Or reverse, if you have those three things happening, you have a strong learning space. The other two, to round out the Focus Five, came from research in the district. So part of my practice is to be in classrooms often, to be in them informally and to be in them very intentionally informally. And so from our intentional and formal visits to classrooms, we use an instructional rounds protocol in our district, as well as I often do learning walks with coordinators in the district and principals. From our visits to classrooms and the data that we collected, we looked at patterns and trends, and we noticed there were two areas that we needed to, that were very basic, going back to April's point about sense of belonging, safe learning environment, and student engagement. And so we created five instructional practices that we wanted to see in, in every classroom in our district. And again, that's objectives in every classroom, criteria for success, which means every student knows how to do an excellent job on the task that they're doing. Checking for understanding, which means the professionals in the room are checking to make sure that students are understanding what they're learning, and they're checking that in a formative way, which means they're going to adjust instruction based on what they find out. Safe learning environment, which means that our educators are taking intentional steps to create sense of belonging in their classrooms. And student engagement, which means that we're intentionally planning our lessons in a way to engage students. We're not just teaching a lesson the way it's designed. We're thinking about the students that are in front of us and their needs and creating, and planning that lesson to engage our students. So I talked with, to Roger's question about collective bargaining, about working closely with the teachers' union to sort of put in place this idea of having these five practices that we wanted to see strongly. And also, when I'm going to ask for those five practices, I need to provide capacity building and professional learning for educators because we don't all know what a criteria for success is, and we don't all know how to check for understanding. So there was a lot of work in identifying the five practices and then being very clear about what the look-for's would be. So it's not just telling teachers, hey, we want you to check for understanding more often, but it's saying, this is what a teacher would be doing if they were doing a great job checking for understanding, and this is what we'd see students doing if you were checking for understanding. So it's being really clear about that. It's providing professional learning and ongoing, because we're constantly having new educators join our district. So we can't just do it one time. We have to have a process that when new educators come, we teach them about the Focus Five. And then we're checking on it. We're in, you asked about measuring progress. We're in classrooms. We're collecting data. So we're currently in an instructional rounds. I had one on Monday, and I have one on next Monday, where we're specifically looking just at the student engagement lens. So we have our look-for's. We're measuring student engagement. We're going to give that data back to the school, so that will be the baseline. data back to the school, so that will be the baseline, and then we'll come again and measure it again. So there, between the two visits, the principal and leadership team at that school are going to take strategic measures to push the needle and change our practice just a little bit on student engagement every time. So that's one example. The other one, I would say, would be around professional learning. Initially, when I joined the district, professional learning was a couple of things. It was a lot of one-off experiences, so it didn't have an ongoing theme. It wasn't always connected to our strategic plan or the direction we were driving in. And it was done to teachers a lot, so it wasn't necessarily connected to an area teachers were trying to work on. And it was also happening individually at schools. So we have four elementary schools and they may be doing all different things, so we weren't getting the coherence across the district. So over the last few years, the teaching and learning team in the district I currently work in worked to refine and sort of update our professional learning process so that we offer a menu of professional learning. It's a series. You attend five different professional learning days and sessions. Educators choose their professional learning path, but everything that's offered is directly aligned to our strategic plan. So at times, we may have required professional learning. So one year, an educator may not choose, but then within a three-year ban, we want to always have educators having a time when they have a choice of their professional learning series. An example of why an educator might not choose one year, we might be implementing a new math program. So the professional learning series for elementary educators might be implementation of the new math program, but we'll make sure that next year, elementary teachers get to choose their professional learning path. So the results of this have been that our professional learning is strategic, it's aligned to where we're headed. We know that every educator in the district is receiving professional learning that's going to move the needle. We've received feedback from educators that they're more engaged and they feel more connected because most of the times, they're making the choice of many choices. And we have offerings that are individual, so you may do a WEDA course on your own, and then we have book clubs. And then we have some professionals coming in, so there's a lot of different formats so people can choose to their learning style as well. So I would say that the Focus Five and the innovating of professional learning are two areas in the district, two additional areas where I feel like we've done a lot of great work that's had direct impact on teaching and learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is your experience with and position on veterans-to-teachers programs? And how do you cultivate a strong staff with diverse resumes and experiences to help broaden the worldview of our students?
I do not have experience with veterans-to-teachers, so I would love to know about that. I am very interested and it sort of connects to windows, mirrors, and doors for me. Having a diverse teaching staff, I think it's really important that students see themselves in our educators or they're experiencing another option or choice. Career changers in all ways, I think broaden the diversity of our experience. Having folks who have gone through teacher prep programs and gone right into teaching, working alongside someone who may have had a completely different career path or life path and then made a change into teaching, I think that's a very diverse and unique experience for educators to collaborate together. And then it brings a new lens, a new opportunity for students. So I think that can enrich our environment. And I also think we need as many people in this profession that we can possibly get that want to be in it. So I am open to adults joining our team that want to be here from any walk of life. And I think we need to be ready as a district to support people that are career-changing or coming from a different lens. Our educators need support, especially folks that are new to the profession, whether you're 21 or 45 or any age. So we need to think about in the district how we're supporting folks that may be coming to the profession from a unique path. But I love that. I love that opportunity for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce?
As you know, we have one school at each level, elementary, middle, and high, in addition to a cooperative school that includes a night school. When developing your budget, how would you ensure that financial resources, which are always shrinking, are distributed equitably at each level? And how would you communicate this to administration and staff at each building? And what specific practices would you put into place to ensure these school buildings are all striving to meet the same district goals set by the school committee?
Well, I think that a budget is part of an educational plan. So first, we understand where we're headed in our strategic plan, and the budget is a facet of that plan. It is part of getting us to our end goal. My experience, my strongest experience with budgeting is zero-based budgeting. So starting with zero and building a budget of what we need. And that has been an experience that has been very interesting. I used that process as a building leader, and I use it now as an assistant superintendent in my district. So we don't start with a number and then decide what we're going to spend it on, but we talk about what the needs are to deliver the educational program that we envision. And then we have to have hard conversations, because there is a reality of what the town can support. And it's our responsibility to be responsible and share the pie with other very important town departments in the town. So I'd work very closely with the town administrator and of course, our director of finance, and we would, and leaders in the district. And I think we would think about, and I also think that a budget and building a budget is a multi-year process. I think then we need to be thinking about several plans for three to five years out. And so we are really thinking long-term about meeting our goals. We can't be building a budget year to year, although you have to fine-tune and get into specifics, because of course, what the town can support makes, means we have to make choices. But we need to be thinking about if we're going to, you know, for example, if our goal is to support adding a certain staff member or moving a program or maybe a curriculum cycle where we know that the math curriculum is going to come up in three years, we need to be thinking about that now and what choices and what the impact of that's going to be. So I think having a really strong strategic plan, very careful communication with the town administrator and our director of finance, and working on a multi-year plan that is moving us towards our vision. I also think it's incumbent upon the superintendent to be a really clear communicator and advocate for the schools. It's getting harder and harder to run our schools on level funds. And so we need to think about how we can work with our town to support the very important needs of our students, being responsible, and also what are some other creative ways to resource and fund the moves we need to make in the district. Okay? Thank you.
April?
Aside from the experiences you've already described to us in your interview to this point, what do you feel is the biggest hurdle you faced as an administrator and how did you handle it? What is something you think you did well in that situation? And what is something you learned from it that you've changed moving forward if and when you encounter a similar situation in our district?
I feel like I've shared so many experiences. Well, I guess I will speak to facing some budget, some budget situations where we had to make very difficult decisions. In the current district that I'm working, we had to make cuts and make decisions that were going to impact students, were going to impact our staff. And it was, it was a very hard situation. It was going to impact specifically the delivering of teaching and learning. And so to sort of work through that situation, it was communicating very clearly, getting feedback from leaders, from members of the teaching and learning team around what kind of decisions. It was reflecting on the strategic plan and thinking about the direction we're heading in and what the impact of making budget cuts is going to have on us being able to reach our strategic plan. It was having really strong communication with the school committee, the town administrator, the director of finance. And ultimately, it was making really hard decisions and trying to make the decision that was going to least impact students. And that's, it never feels good to have to cut staff members. And I think if we are in that position, what we need to do is make the decision that's best for kids and best for the district to achieve its strategic plan.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Our community, on our community survey conducted by Mas, we received hundreds of responses that indicated the number one quality for stakeholders is that they want our next superintendent to be honest and transparent in decision-making. Why do you believe this is important in educational leadership? And what would you do in your first six months to build credibility with teachers, families, students, and civic leaders?
Well, I think it's really important to be an honest, transparent decision-maker, because we're constantly making really important decisions that affect children, staff members, schools, the community. And so people are going to want to hear how those decisions were made and why those decisions were made. And they're going to want to hear them clearly and with conviction and with strategy. And so I think it's important that the leader of the Wareham Public Schools has a very strong strategy, is a very clear communicator, has built trust and respect in the community so that if and when, hard things have to be communicated, and they will. Folks know that those decisions were made because they're the best for students in that scenario. They were made to align with the strategic plan, and they trust the leader who's making the decisions ultimately. In my first six months as a superintendent of Wareham Public Schools, I would focus, especially the first 30 days, on listening and learning. That would be my goal. I would want to meet and talk to as many folks, as many stakeholders in Wareham that I could. Students, staff, families, leaders, community members, clergy, different groups in town, veterans groups, Elks Rotary. I'm not sure what Wareham has, but I want to talk to all of them. And I want to just listen and learn at first. Once I spend some, a few weeks doing that, I would want to start analyzing and asking a lot of questions. So I'd want to start digging into the data, not just academic data, that certainly, but what about attendance and enrollment? What about what our kids do other than academics in our schools? I want to look at all the data and I want to ask a lot of questions of the leaders, of the staff, of the students. And then after that, I would look to make a plan. I'd be working closely with the school committee and my leadership team, and I would want to come to the school committee and present a plan of action for the rest of my first year of superintendency and how I would take on some immediate priorities and also have a long-term plan to attack bigger issues that are going to take more time.
Thank you.
So we have a few minutes left.
Okay.
I know you've had a long day, but I want to give the committee a chance to follow up in any area that they, that they would like before we close off the questions and before you have an opportunity to make a short closing statement.
Sure.
So is there any member who would like to follow up on anything at all?
I would just kind of like to clarify about the Focus Five that you were talking about.
Sure. Yes. Just want me to clarify that?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So the name Focus Five is something we came up with. It's just like a ringy name. It's not anything that's out there in the world, except in Randolph. But basically, it's to identify core essential instructional practices that should be happening in every classroom across the district. So that if you were to visit any classroom in the district, you can expect to see these five things happening. And what's important about that is those are the five things, or at least the three, that are aligned in research to really strong learning communities. So the three that we chose. And then the other two were chosen because they're data-based on patterns and trends happening in our classrooms. So that same Focus Five wouldn't necessarily come here to Wareham, but we'd want to look at what are the research-based practices and also what's currently happening here in our district that we need to react to. For us in Randolph, we wanted to react to making sure that our spaces were all safe. So we also identified safe learning environment, and then we identified student engagement, because we felt like our students were not as engaged as we wanted them to be.
Okay.
So it's a mix of research-based practices and also practices that were chosen based on data we collected in our district, particular only to our district.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Anybody else? So Massachusetts governor and legislature is mulling over whether they should take up the federal government's offer to pass a law that would allow Massachusetts parents to get a $1,700 tax credit to take to any educational institution they want to reduce the cost of not going to public schools, parochial, private, et cetera.
Jeff, point of order, just because this question wasn't asked of the other candidates, I don't feel that it would be appropriate to ask of her when you didn't ask this question of the other two candidates.
It's a follow-up to my question about vouchers, which I did mention.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Why do you think that's, why do you think that's happening nationwide, that vouchers in 18 states are being offered?
I think there is a rising distrust of public education that's concerning. And my guess is that that movement is founded in the rising distrust of public education and wanting to support folks making other choices.
Do you think it's, this distrust is deserved?
Of course, I do not. In my experience, where I have been a part of public education, I would say absolutely not. I don't have enough research to know about public education at the national level. I think we all know that Massachusetts competes very well nationally. And so that's something that we can feel pretty good about, our schools here in Massachusetts. But as a national movement, I would have to do more research to, you know, I'm definitely not going to stand behind schools nationally, but I am going to stand behind the ones I work in.
Thank you. Would you like to make a short closing statement?
Yes, I would love to. I'm feeling empathy for the very difficult decision that you're about to make. And I want to, I'm also feeling very proud of myself and the way that I have authentically been myself. That was my goal in entering this process, was to not try to answer questions correctly and be what you wanted. I wanted to be who I am. And so I feel like you've seen that. I'm in a really good place personally in terms of the direction you go in. And as I said in my first interview, I'm going to be cheering for Wareham Public Schools. Whether I'm the superintendent or not, I'm going to be cheering a lot harder if I'm the superintendent. What you're going to get from me, if I'm your next superintendent, is you're going to get someone who 100% of the time puts students first. You're going to get somebody who's going to push the district towards continuous improvement. And you're going to get someone who's clear, authentic, and dedicated to building trust. So those are the things you'll get from me every single day that I'm your superintendent. And I respect the fact that that may not be a match for you, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll take a 10-minute recess. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. We are resuming our meeting, and we are now in the deliberation stage. I am going to ask the committee for some open discussion about these three wonderful candidates because I think they all deserve praise, and of course, the search committee deserves praise for bringing them in front of us. I would prefer, I would prefer not to take any motions until we've finished the open discussion, and when we all seem to have, you know, said our piece, at that point, anybody can make a motion, and that will be fine. And at that point, we'll still have, assuming the motion gets a second, the opportunity for further discussion. So I don't want anything left unsaid, especially as a courtesy to these three fine candidates. So who would like to start out by expressing some, some of their thoughts? I am not going to go first.
I guess I'll start. So I would just first like to say that each, we're so lucky to have three candidates who have, you know, dedicated their career to teaching children, and that they want to come to Wareham to be our superintendent. Each one of them brings a strength, so at this point, you know, we just, I guess, have to decide which, which strength is most important to our district at this time. And that's all I want to say.
I would add that I think we have a very likable, personable, strong communicator who can identify with students and staff in the mix. We have a very competent individual with strong operational knowledge and human resource experience, and we have a very enthusiastic, joyous educator who is focused on improved teaching and learning. Those are three great qualities. I wish we had them all in one candidate, and so this is an extremely difficult choice.
I think for me, one of the perks, I would say, of being able to go to all three site visits, I was kind of disappointed with one that we weren't able to see the interactions within a school in one of the site visits. I did like seeing, in two of the site visits, that we were able to see interactions with students, with staff, with, you know, these particular individuals, knowing the names of everyone that they walked past. Whether that just happened to be coincidental for the building that we were in, or if that's, for me, it felt very genuine that they really paid attention to a student-first priority. So that, to me, stuck out. I was really kind of disappointed with one of the site visits that we were sort of in a forum like this, and it felt a little bit too formal. I would have liked to have seen some more student interaction with that one, so that one sort of has me, I'm always kids-first, that's how I've always been, that's how I always will be. So for me, that kind of narrows my preference, not for lack of, you know, thinking that they're definitely qualified in certain aspects of things, but I, I was going to fully say it, I'm torn between Worley and Amy is where I'm leaning. I think that they both bring strengths, and they've emphasized, really, their involvement in the community, which I know that we need in Wareham, and in the perception of the town. I liked the fact that Worley mentioned digging in at the middle school, which is where I feel that's where we start to lose kids, right? And I've said this in most instances, it's easy to engage elementary parents. Little kids are fun. They're enthusiastic, they're energetic, we can, you know, every parent goes to, elementary parent, kindergarten parent, pre-K parent goes to open house, they go to the fun runs, they do all the things because it's fun, it's cute, it's exciting. Then you get hormones, and middle school, and kids figuring out who they are, and kids suck at home, and they suck at school, and it's really hard, and it's really challenging.
No, they don't, April, they don't.
They don't, but they do, as a parent, like in general, not saying that in a negative way, it's just they're more challenging. It's a more challenging area for the teachers to have to deal with, for the parents to have to deal with, and for the kids to have to deal with themselves and their peers. It's just really, really difficult. And I think that that's always been the focus, and it's not that we haven't had great, we have great educators, we have great systems in place, so when kids do go through that phase, it's not just Wareham that this happens in, that that is the most challenging school to be a part of. And then that trickles into high school, and that's where the numbers start to leave because instead of looking at it as like a cultural aspect of, all right, this is that grade level, this is that age where everyone in every district is seeing these challenges, that's when parents are starting to move their kids into other avenues, where they're saying, okay, well, they do need a trade, so let's send them to upper caste, which, yes, it's amazing that we are part of the upper caste system, and that we do have that, and I'm not disparaging that, but when they leave to go to our neighboring districts that don't necessarily offer what we offer, we know the incredible opportunities that our high school has. We listen to student voice, which, and as Scott presents every time, he gives us our curriculum and the stuff that the kids want. It's huge. So it breaks my heart, and I get very emotional about it because we have so much good, and our perception is so awful, and how do we fix that? We've had a number of challenges, and, you know, people that come in that say that they want to do that, and it has yet to be implemented. So mentioning the importance of our perception in the community, working with outside stakeholders, the fact that they want to work with, like, veterans groups and, you know, Rotary Clubs and other organizations in town, that was a huge thing to say, or mentioning going out into these communities, into the, you know, being involved, figuring out the why, asking those questions, was really, really important for me to hear. So I think, based on what I feel, having had a student, the most recent, come through the school system, that's where I'm, where I'm leaning at the moment. So I'll let someone else talk.
Like everybody said, we have a great group of candidates, and I am looking at one in particular, but, you know, I'll accept whatever, whoever gets. Well, you'll get a vote. Joyce, did you want to say something else?
I just wanted to say that clearly, perception and keeping kids in Wareham is a priority, but we also need a superintendent who can support the students and the teachers who are here every day, you know, doing that work. You know, we, it's hard, we can't control what other people think, but yes, we do need to work on changing that perception. But at the same time, we need someone who has the knowledge and the ability to support the very hard-working teachers and staff, you know, here in our school, working every day.
I think all three would be capable of that.
They're all three very good candidates, yes.
So what do we think we need currently, knowing the supports we have in central office, knowing the needs that we have? What outweigh, I guess I'm trying to figure out, what's more valuable? Is it more valuable to be, have that spark and that joy? Is it more valuable to have that true operational knowledge? That's what I'm struggling with at the moment.
Twenty, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, and I'm not suggesting that the term average is good enough, but we were academically an average district within Massachusetts. Now, agreed, based on MCAS scores, who knows how critically important those are. We have, we declined for about 20 years, and now, over the last two or three years, we have stabilized and in fact gone up a little. But we're still a long way from being an average district, which is where we were. I happen to know this is incredibly frustrating to some of our teachers because they, some of them were here then, and they remember. So if we were an average district or a little above-average district, and given our demographics and our, I guess, I suppose especially our demographics, I would, I would be leaning towards what I'll say, and none of these terms should be taken as pejorative. I would be leaning towards competency, that we just need competency because we have, we have the solutions, we're slowly implementing them. I happen to believe we have a very strong team, but that strong team, it seems to me, needs more than just competency at the level of superintendent to continue the momentum that we have achieved over the last two or three years. Modest momentum, but still at least momentum in the right direction. So for that reason, I move to a person that I would normally be voting for. And then I look at the other two candidates that I think are inspirational in different One is inspirational in terms of how he would be perceived within the community, and I don't discount that. I, I think there's an eloquence, there is an affability, there is a lot of personal qualities that I admire greatly, but I don't quite see, it's hard to say this without making it sound like you're, you're being critical. I'm not, I'm just differentiating more than criticizing. But I don't see the educational passion and the, and the actual ability to implement that passion into programs that will have a significant impact. And then I see another person who has all sorts of wonderful personal qualities, joy, love, passion, accomplishments, but I don't have the same level of confidence in the competence, but I don't know that it's not there. So for me, it's a question of what do I gamble? How much is it worth to gamble that this person who has wonderful skill sets has proven from a teaching and learning perspective that she can accomplish a great deal, and will that be enough to compensate for perhaps insufficient central office skills, et cetera? And I, but I draw some comfort from the fact that we have such a strong team that would be underneath her. And that says to me, all the great qualities will, will be able to be manifested in the results, and whatever deficiencies she might have initially, because I think she will learn quickly, will be made up for by an outstanding team underneath her. All that leads, leads me to be leaning towards one person. Is it, is it perfect? No, because none of these candidates are perfect. I just think we have to make a decision, and in my case, I have to believe that just plain competency and, and the kind of leadership that I think is needed to, to take the momentum we have and to have it accelerate in the right direction is worth the gamble that this person isn't, isn't perfect because none of us are. So those are my thoughts.
When I did the reference checks that I did for each candidate, right, we each, three of us called three of them, the one thing I asked was for what people in those references would consider a weakness versus a strength, because whenever we went to all of the districts, everyone gave us all of the strengths, for the most part, right? We did get some candid conversation. The biggest thing that all three references that I spoke to said, that the biggest challenge was that none of our candidates have been a superintendent before. So they all have that as, as a level playing field, that none of them have been in the position to fully lead a district, but they have all mentioned relying on a leadership team, a central office team, and support from a more well-rounded, not-so-much-top-down kind of approach. So none of them have, in my opinion, a leg up on the other in that regard. So I look at what, what we have for, like you said, like I'm looking at how they would interact with kids, because the thing is, is kids, right? We want, if our kids are engaged and our kids are excited, and our educators are engaged and our educators are excited, then that's going to just snowball throughout everything else in the district, in the town, in everything. So there's two very, you know, that had that energy, different ways, different levels of it, and I had my concerns with each. One had more high school experience, where did that lead with our elementary level of things? And then one had more elementary experience and focused on the early literacy, and my concern was, where does that tie into the higher ed part of our, of our district with the middle and high school? I was really kind of on the fence until we asked our questions today, and, and the site visits also were very helpful. I do think, from an administrative point of view, if we were hiring two separate positions and one was curriculum instruction and taught, and then one was just, you know, HR and policy and running, then we'd, we'd have two different positions. So I looked at that a little bit when making my decision, but ultimately, like we have, like you said, we have an amazing central office staff, we have people in place now with, we have Bethany and we have Tracy, we have people with experience in this district in roles that are supporting that position. We have Jamie, who's just a unicorn, and we, we allow, you know, we have so much of our student voice involved, and that, for me, is the biggest thing. What do I think as a, you know, as a person who's been in some of the classes, you know, as a substitute, as a coach, and what, where the need is? I'm looking at that, and that's why there's the two that I'm kind of, are more frontrunner to me. But I think in regards to who can, they all have the same, they're, none of them have been a superintendent, so to me, that's all the same.
Any additional thoughts, Kevin?
Thinking.
Because absent additional thoughts from the committee, I'll ask for a motion. I don't care what the motion is, just a motion for us to move the process along.
So I just wanted to say, when you talked about, you know, someone isn't perfect, like April said, we're never, there's never going to be a candidate who was an elementary teacher to begin with, and a high school teacher to begin with. There's no one ever that's going to have that range.
No one's going to check every box.
You're 100% correct.
I hate being in this position, but I, like...
Well, I want to just say upfront, I get outvoted all the time in my life, and the, I'm on two executive boards for significant not-for-profits, I make decisions all the time, I get outvoted. This is one of the more difficult decisions I've ever been empowered to be a part of, literally, and I make decisions all the time. So I'm going to be respectful of whatever the results are this evening, and so no one should be concerned about, you know, going in the opposite direction of me or the opposite direction of anybody else because I respect all of you. So with that, unless Kevin, you want to say something more, I will ask for a motion.
No, I think we just have to make our decision.
Okay. Does anybody have a motion that, that they would like to make? And we will have further discussion, okay, if it gets a second.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Hartley-Matson as superintendent and to, vote to enter her into contract negotiations for the position of superintendent of schools.
Thank you for the courage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Okay, we are now open to discussion again.
I just want to take the opportunity to say again, each one of these candidates, each one of the six, you know, we had the privilege of being on the search committee. There were so many good candidates. And clearly, this is a very difficult decision. So I just wanted to say again, we're very fortunate to have three very good candidates for superintendent.
And I want to make it clear, my decision is in fact, in part, my vote will be in part because of the strength of our management team. What I call management team, what you call administrative team. I would have a different, I would have a different vote if I didn't believe in the administrative team that we already have.
I absolutely agree.
I think part for me, when reviewing my notes and I like have a dent in my finger. I was writing so fervently, like almost verbatim shorthand, what every word that they were saying. And what stood out a little bit in her favor for me was there was much more specifics. Having a generalized answer, I understand being in an interview with a time constraint, you're not going to get all of the information that you necessarily want or need to make a decision. But when you know that that's what's happening, to try to be as intentional with your answers, and I don't think that either, any of the candidates were not intentional. But to have as many specifics and more, I looked to who answered the questions fully and wholly. And that was more, there were more answers that were comprehensively answered in every ask, every piece of the question, where some were a part of the question. And not that the part that they answered wasn't great, but it was sort of left without as much information or as much purpose or intention or ideology of how so much as identifying like, yeah, this is where I feel this is blah, blah, blah. And I agree or I disagree or this is what I've done. And then it was a little bit more, a little bit more forward-moving in, in her answers. It's, it is really, really hard because it's a really difficult decision. I know that, like, I feel like her walking through the schools of the, of the middles, of like the elementary schools, the kids are going to, you know, feed off that energy. But I also feel like in the other, with Worley, I think the high school kids would be really receptive. So it's, but at the same time, they're not going to be in those schools. They're going to be in the central office. So it's not that they're, we're school-specific looking for. And it has to be more of a, what's for the greater good than one segment of our, of our school, which I feel like for a lot of time, we've had that focus on, you know, let's get all of the, you know, the, the perception one, like we have a new elementary school. We're doing so much on early literacy and early interventions and things like that, which is amazing. And we know we need that foundation and data shows that we need that foundation. But again, then there's the, well, where, what are we doing for the kids we currently have? What are we doing for the kids that didn't get that when they were in the elementary school because it wasn't identified as an issue? Like, how do we meet them where they are? And I do like some of the approaches that were mentioned on, you know, tailoring, I forget, where there was a very specific thing that was about the instruction.
Focus five?
Not even the focus five. That was, it was even a different, it was in a different question. But about how to, you know, kind of with the sense of belong and figuring out how the kids can be seen and reaching the kids that don't feel reached. And that, that really struck something with me with the, the mapping, the student mapping with adults and making sure that those kids.
Oh, yes, right.
Where they found, yeah, where they found, you know, in a way that was, I've never heard that, where you're identifying things that you might have missed. And not just doing that with the younger students, but mentioning doing that with the older students. And I thought that, you know, that was a really intentional and specific model to mention on reaching kids at every grade level. And I really, that really resonated with me because I feel like, you know, that's something with the upper kids where she said, check in, how would, if they have a job when they were working or checking in with their sports schedule. So it wasn't just solely focused on, you know, the, the littles that come in and, and pre-K and early interventions. It was more of like, okay, how do we meet those kids where they currently are? And engage them and make sure that they felt seen and that they felt recognized and that someone was making a concerted effort to reach them. So that really, that really felt important to me because that is a really tough scenario for the older kids.
I'll just add that if we're going to take a flyer or a leap of faith, I want to do it around teaching and learning. And I think one candidate hit that the most with some energy. So I would support the motion.
Any thoughts you'd like to share before we actually vote? No. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? No? No? Okay. Four, one, zero.
Could I make a motion to potentially reconsider to show support for the candidate?
Oh, sure, yes.
In order to show entire committee's support?
Four, one, zero is, is the motion and the vote. But we sometimes like to reconsider to, to make it clear to the candidate that there was unanimous support. There's nothing compelling you to change your vote in favor of that.
I'm unanimous in her support. I just, there was somebody else I would have rather.
Understood.
I don't know if, if that's the way it should go or not, but.
It's entirely up to you. So we have a motion to reconsider. Does anybody want to provide a second for that?
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of reconsidering the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are now, we are now reconsidering the vote, okay?
It was an I guess because I don't understand what the process is with the reconsideration.
The motion to reconsider was five, zero, zero. Yes. Now we are going to vote again, okay? Could I have a motion again?
I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Hartley-Matson as superintendent to enter into contract negotiations.
Second.
And a second.
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry. You should do a roll call vote for this instead of just a show of hands.
I sit corrected. Okay. Joyce?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes, okay. We are still four, one, zero. Is there anything else that people would like to bring before the committee?
I just want to again thank the, the communities that welcomed us for our site visits. The people who took their time out of their, their day and the search committee members and Kevin and Joyce specifically for all of the work that you guys did to, to get us to this point. I want to thank the, the other candidates who were remarkable in their own ways. And I know that if they do continue to try to advance, hopefully to a district that's more well-suited for them, that they will succeed in their, in their search for superintendency. And yeah, that's all I got.
And I'll just throw in Sean Cusello from Matson. Thank you for your guidance. And again, Jamie, which is your vote, you'll have your.
Amen. Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Did, who was the?
Oh, I made it. I was seconding myself, sorry.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you. Yes, I know.